So I'll call the meeting to order and I'll start with Sue.
Here.
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, I'm here.
Excellent. Um, Gordon.
Yeah.
Uh, Peter.
Here.
And Laura's running a few minutes late and I haven't heard from Barry, so. Did you hear anything from Barry?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Great. Um, so we're gonna start off with, um, uh, opening the public hearing and I left my script at home, so. Um, so we have a public hearing tonight for, which we're gonna open, um, for, uh, three, um, hold on one second.
Sarah, you can open that in your email.
Yeah, no, I had it. I have a script that I forgot to print. We're already taking a page from the last book. Um, so we're opening the, um, application from, for three public hearings, Reed Park Floating Dock Expansion and Addendum, Morse Pier Fisherman's Facility Proposed Docks and Pier Repairs and Phase Two Tux Point Public Dock Expans- Expansion, and they have been properly noticed. Um, the, the reason we see these is because they are subject to Chapter 91 licenses and our bylaws, um, say that the, um, Planning Board must weigh in on, um, on those for using the special permit criteria. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Foss Engineering, Fiona Vardy, I believe is gonna start with the Reed Park, and the Morse Pier discussions, and then we'll take up the Rotunda Tux Point. We've allotted an hour for this, um, uh, hearing and we also have, uh, so we expect that we will, um, continue it. If you have a public, we will take comments from the board and from the public tonight, so if you, and in that order, so if you have a comment you wanna make, please raise your hand or I'll do my best to see them and Gail will help us with that and Sue and Chris as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Fiona, I'll make you a co-host. So welcome Fiona Vardy.
Thank you.
I guess, so before I use start, may I just ask Fionn if you wanna do any introductory remarks at all or?
Oh gosh, no, let's leave it to the experts.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm just curious, um, if you're seeing the Google Earth on screen.
Yeah.
All right, great. Uh, well, thank you very much for the opportunity for us to present these projects in Manchester. Um, as Sarah mentioned, we have submitted special permit applications because we are subject to the MASPE Chapter 91. They are both municipal projects and located in the Manchester Inner Harbor. I'll be talking about Reed Park first. And I should mention that both projects have been, um, developing in tandem with the main goals of alleviating congestion within the harbor and to support the town's waterfront economy. Um, okay. So Reed Park is located southwest of Beach Street. It's an existing municipal waterfront facility that includes a 50-foot-long passport pier with a 63-by-4-foot aluminum gangway and approximately 340 feet of eight-foot-wide floating docks. This work was completed in 2019 and the site does include existing, uh, utilities. So the proposed project includes the expansion to the existing floating dock system in order to improve the access to the waterfront and will be providing additional dockage for recreational vessels as well as, um, the harbor master vessel and law enforcement vessels as needed. The, uh, installation includes 22 8-by-24-foot floating, um, floating dock system, which will be supported by 23 12-inch diameter timber piles. Um, and as I said, the, the new floats will be connected to the existing floats, um, galvanized hardware. Um, and as I will go over a little bit more in a minute, the, um, the Reed Park project will actually create an entire walkable connection between Reed and Moscone Mo Parks, um, which would be a great recreational, um, expansion. So several design iterations were considered for this project and the-
Are you advancing slides at all? Because we're only seeing the Google Earth slide.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was-
Oh, that's fine.
Showing you the product plans. Are you able to see the?
Yes.
The photos? All right, sorry about that. All right. Um, so the project will be seeking funding from the state's Boating and Infrastructure Grants. Um, so several alternative designs were considered to meet the very specific guidelines for this grant, which includes maintaining a, um, an 18-inch minimum clearance to the mudline on the land side, the landward side of the floats, as well as a minimum water depth of six feet on at least 50% of the, of the float on the seaward side. And on being said, the, the product and the number of piles have been designed to avoid and minimize impacts from the pile driving to the minimum extent possible. And as I said, the product site is served by existing utilities. So it was, uh, aimed at avoiding the, um, utilities in the existing area as well. Um, I will stop there briefly. Let me know if anyone has any questions so far.
Got any question now?
Yeah?
Yes, I do. This is Gordon Brewster. This is, the one you're showing is the preferred option, correct?
Correct.
So I know you went through a bunch of iterations to get there and this one seems to be the preferred one because of why?
Because it, it meets the, the specific guidelines for the Boating Infrastructure Grants, um, so that the project can obtain, uh, funding to support the project, to support the work.
And if, if I could add Fiona, if you don't mind, the other, um, the other thing, uh, that's really important is the outfall pipe coming from the waste treatment plant. Uh, the, the jog was a big, that you see there, 90-degree turn was a really big deal. Getting that placed in the right spot, uh, and then giving us our appropriate depths front and back on the floats.
Where's the wastewater plant, outfall? Can you just?
Uh, so-
If you try, if you go control L-
See the lines coming through.
If you control L, you can probably make it red. No, I guess not. Are we having a problem?
Let me know. I need to zoom in further.
The dotted line is the?
The dotted line is the outfall?
Mm-hmm.
According to that. Oh, I see, it's on the, on the screen. Okay.
I'll, I'll add that. Unfortunately, we don't have great plans of some rework that was done, approximately 10 years ago, and they changed the alignment as it came out of the wastewater plant and kinda in that specific area. Um, you know, we have very good plans from when the outfall was installed back in, uh, I think it was 92. But to be, you know, very conservative, um, this alignment, basically eliminated as much possibility of, of, you know, the outfall interfering with any of the piles. Uh, so that was a, you know, something that contributed to going with this, this layout as well.
Yes, thank you.
And how, can you zoom back out? How, it's not shown, the railroad bridge isn't shown on at least the plan I'm looking at?
Just start with you.
Yes.
So if there's a boat on that outside of the parallel to the travel, why would they be in the way?
So that's a, that's a 100-foot, that's a 100-foot run. Uh, the idea that, that quarter there, we want to keep open because that, uh, 400-foot run along the tracks in the back there is where dinghies will tie up. So, uh, there's plenty of room and plenty of water just designed to allow the dinghies to get in and out.
No. My question is traffic, if a boat is tied up on the short leg there by the railroad bridge, why would they not be in the travel lane of the already tight railroad bridge?
So actually, it would be inside, uh, the, uh, wooden wall there. You would not actually be in the channel tied up there.
So you're only gonna tie on one side of the?
No, it doesn't matter, which, if you're tied up on the outside, on the Manchester Marine side, you will not be in the channel. You will not, uh, impede traffic in and out, uh, underneath the bridge.
And I just walked down there right before coming here and the woman told me that you have four feet at low.
What, what woman? Where?
The person, the dock master there. I asked how many feet at low? And she said four feet, except right where the giant boat is tied up right now.
Yeah, that's, that's not correct.
See it from the? It's like five feet, five feet. All right, wow. Okay, um.
So I guess the short answer to my question is that this little jog in here allows them to put the piles where they want to without interrupting the C1 and the 321. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
I'm talking to myself. The, so the configuration with that, I thought that was very interesting and little L to the right to the top of the screen. That allows you to avoid the sewer lines, is that correct by, with pile installation?
So the piles are aligned so that, yeah, it is that they definitely will miss the sewer pipe. But that jog has to be in place if you come from, um, if you look at drawing to the right where the existing 250 feet ends out to, uh, that turn, it's shallow right there. So those flows had to be further out to get appropriate depth.
Okay, yeah, that was, it was actually quite an interesting analysis where I read all the, uh, the alternates that came up with how this could be laid out here and the thought process behind it and how you arrived at it, so I, this is good, this is good clarification.
So you're adding-
I give all the credit to the engineers.
How many linear feet of dock?
We're adding 500 to the 250 that exist.
Plus the jog that comes down, right?
You're talking about the lower L?
Where's this, the lower L, isn't, so I'm looking at 278 plus 252.
Oh, you know, I didn't, you know, I didn't add the three, um, free tie-up spots either. Down at the Beach Street end.
Where, where's the?
That's, that's not part of this, yeah, that's, the three original dock 75 feet that were here from the 1930s is still part of this system, the free tie-up space. That's on the other end. Yeah, you can see it right there.
I don't see it.
It's, it's to the far right on the Beach Street end. There's 75 feet, that first 75 feet is the original 75 feet that, uh, we had at Reed Park.
All right, um, you have more Fiona or?
Uh, not for Reed Park.
Okay, Laura has a question.
Hi, this is Laura, uh, Fiona, and a couple of questions regarding public access for the, um, Chapter 91 requirements and, um, for small self-paddled boats like the kayaks and paddleboards. Um, so the first question is, uh, and I apologize, it's kind of a little late, so if you already talked about the kind of public welcome walking route between the two parks?
No, I haven't talked about it.
Have you talked about it?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, but you're gonna get to that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, um, second question is regarding small boats who don't need to tie off but might wanna lift onto the, uh, docks just as a, as a refuge or wants to take a break or come up to, uh, Ascot Oa Park for the concert, whatever it might be. Is there a place that's available to those boaters that's accessible to the shore, or to the shore?
Right, so we don't, uh, we never have, uh, so, uh, practice allowed the kayaks and paddleboards to be on the dock. It becomes, uh, whether it was the 75 feet or the current configuration, it's just, it's not safe. So if you go, uh, down to Reed Park right now, right next to the park itself, there's a little shingle beach there and boats will still be able to paddle in behind and get down to that nice little shingle beach and haul kayaks and paddleboards up like they do now and, uh, walk up into the park and either watch a concert or get an ice cream or more exercise.
So that's on the, on the, on the side where you're saying the little skips are gonna tie up or between the railroad tracks and the long leg?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And there'll be room to do that, that any tie, tie or low tie?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that clarification. And then you're gonna get to the, uh, kind of publicly accessible route from there, how you connect the pedestrian between the two parks? Thought I heard you say that when I came in.
Yes, yeah, they're shown, um, on the Morse Pier product plans.
So, okay, sure, we haven't got there yet. Your Google Earth image, if you go back to that, it's, uh, unfortunately, uh, the image in your, on Google Earth, I'm looking at it and in your document is not when the harbor is occupied. And it doesn't reflect the new exi- pier, I believe. It's, it, maybe it's a winter image?
It is, yeah, this is, uh, off-season image for sure.
Okay, so we have a lot of boats moored there. What happens to those moorings or those in the?
So, uh, all of those moorings are bow and stern, so they don't swing. There are, I think, um, five that have to be relocated within that same area. Uh, it's, it's really just gonna be a matter of, um, neatening up and making nice neat rows. Uh, it'll be a lot like the, uh, new docks over in front of Manchester Marine, excuse me, over this room on either side to travel down through. It just requires a little bit of time and effort to put those in nice neat rows. We won't lose any moorings.
And the goals of this, can you just restate the goals here? Which are safety and what are the other goals?
Well, the, the goals that I've always stated are safety, uh, uh, the navigation piece, but public access and, um, this facility when completed, if, if completed, I see as the long-term means of funding the harbor. Harbor projects, infrastructure dredging, seawalls, repairing piers, mania, all those different, uh, important things that there was no funding source for, uh, 10 years ago. And this, this facility will go very, very far toward making this harbor self-funding. And it also is a real boon for the businesses in town. All of the restaurants, the stores, they have all benefited just from what's already there.
So is this, Fionn, this is Peter Morton, is there a fiscal impact?
Right.
In here somewhere?
You mean cost to the town?
No, the, as well the benefits, the fiscal benefits to the town that you were just explaining.
Sure, so will, we charge, well, for example, we've got this old 250 feet now with no, uh, amenities, uh, at $3 a foot for overnight boaters and then $10, uh, an hour to come in and type and go use the restaurants. Last year, this facility generated $32,000, which covered every dime of what it costs to staff it and then put money back into, uh, the general fund, about $20,000 back into the general fund. And then the benefit to all of the businesses who, I think if you were to go downtown and, and poll the stores, they would tell you, the bookstore, the restaurants, uh, be, the supermarket, hardware store, Dunkin' Donuts, they would all share that, uh, they've seen an increase in traffic, that's boating related because of the dock. Uh, that was the right answer to the question.
I, I mean, is it reasonable to get, uh, something that projects what the new structure will generate?
Oh, well, so just, uh, real simple math, if, um, we're getting $3 a foot now of amenities, um, we put in the water and electricity, which is part of this plan, we go to $5 a foot and, uh, we triple the space, I, I project that we could generate $150,000 a year at this facility. That would be 100 and, anyway, $135,000 annually that could go back into maintaining the harbor, paying for a bond that will have to raise to pay for dredging, replacing a boat.
So one of the questions I have is that, that certainly one of the harbor issues is the length of the mooring list. And if you have enough space there for, I don't know, X boats, 20 boats, 15, how, um, and those are transient boaters coming in and it doesn't help your mooring, or the mooring list, which is a, has for decades been a, a problem, and something that the taxpayers repeatedly want to see, um, shortened. Why, why are we electing to have a dock space for transients at the expense of what could potentially be mooring space if we really have six feet there?
Right, so, uh, we could probably add another half a dozen moorings right along the shore if everything were neatened and lined up, just like we would do for, uh, the Reed Park project. But this is also the commercial part of the harbor. This is the area that for centuries has, uh, been dedicated to the commercial fishermen. And, uh, I am not inclined to think it's a good idea to put recreational moorings in an area and start squeezing out, uh, the commercial fishermen. Then the other piece is that I, I have a hard time figuring out how the town will pay for its infrastructure needs in the coming decades when grant funds dry up for harbors like Manchester, small, uh, communities like this. When funding is going to go to Salem and Gloucester, New Bedford and Fairhaven and Boston, all of those larger towns that, uh, are seeing impact to their communities because of climate change, uh, I don't know where the money will come from to support the needs of communities like Manchester. And this, this is real estate that fronts railroad tracks and a waste treatment plant. It's, uh, an opportunity for the town to put itself in a good place fiscally to take care of itself in the coming decades. That's, that's been my thought process for this.
Um, and Faith, can you just advance it to the, um, slide that shows the plant proposed plan, please? Okay, and then I, I have one other question, but, um, Sue and Chris, if you have questions, speak up. My, so the goals are safety, public access for transient public access, long-term revenue and economic development.
Right, I think it's, uh-
Yeah, if we're bringing in, in public who don't know the harbor and we've got, and you're worried about putting in moorings for people because of the conflict with commercial boats, how is, how, how does this, I don't, I'm trying to understand how safety is improved here. It's very tight and people coming in with big boats to spend the night, how does that, how does that improve safety?
Well, uh, this part of the harbor when I first started was, um, we had no staff at the dock. We had, um, three one-hour spots for boats up to 24 feet, so you could get three boats on there and boats used to race into the harbor. They raced and they rapted and they overwhelmed the fisherman's facility and they overwhelmed the boat club. And the moment we put in the 250 feet with staff who made sure that the fisherman's facility wasn't used, um, by recreational boaters, cutting out our commercial fishermen, and we started collecting revenue from a whole aspect of, of boaters that came and used this harbor and never contributed a dime. We improved, uh, safety pretty dramatically. I would say in this case, the safety improvements will come from, uh, the realignment of the moorings. Already vastly safer to drive down into the boat club or to this facility than it was because of the bow and stern moorings. Part of this project is to finish up that piece and, uh, put these moorings exactly where they should be, just like in Camden Harbor, where vessels over 100 feet long, sailing vessels over 100 feet long can come in and tie up with berths and discharge and take on passengers and go in and out safely. Camden is not a big harbor, uh, but they've done exactly this sort of thing with their moorings and you can navigate safely.
I would argue this is, we're a very different community than Camden, but that's just my opinion. And it's a very narrow passage to get there, to bring. Are you thinking of others, is there gonna be a, a limit on how, uh, how large the vessels can be besides the fact that they'll bottom out at six feet?
We already have a limit in length of 60 feet. Uh, we've, we've had, our first year here before we put that length limit on, we had an 85-foot boat come in and that was before we'd, uh, done. Following that, we subsequently did some more adjustment of moorings to open up the channel more. Now, I would never encourage an 85-foot boat to come down on a weekend, but I can tell you there's been many weekends where we've had 50-foot-plus boats come down and safely navigate and tie up at the dock.
Okay, uh, question, uh, Chris- Okay, question, Chris and Sue, do you have any questions? What we should probably do is jump to the other two pieces and then we'll, I'm sure we probably want to take a site walk, is my suggestion, to look at this. So Faith, if you can jump to the Morse Pier overview.
Sure. Okay. So Morse Pier is just across the harbor from Reed Park. This project is intended, this project is intended to alleviate the dockage for early congestion and support the commercial fishermen vessels. Right now includes the existing town-owned and managed Morristown Pier and gangway and landing floats for transient vessels. And both performed an inspection of the pier and its components in 2022 in order to put forth an engineering design plan to support the town's goals that we've been talking about and also to recommend, excuse me, minor repairs so that the existing pier. So, and this proposed conditionsite plan also shows the walkable connection that I mentioned earlier. So the existing gangway will be repositioned and four finger floats will be added to connect to the existing Reed Park float system. And there are four by 30-foot finger floats and an alignment on this side and then an additional singular 40 by 30 finger float will be added to the existing Reed Park float. The docking system will be supported by 14 12-inch diameter piles and water service will be provided to the new slips via the existing water service at the site. Okay, oopsie, sorry. Does anyone have questions on this site plan so far?
No, this is Gordon again. Would you mind describing, I'm in Mascanomo Park, I want to get out to the, to the new piers. Because this is another one, when you went through quite an exhaustive analysis of options that could be put in here. Would you mind just describing how I get onto the pier?
Get down off to, I apologize, it's the chief of police, I have to take this.
I'll jump in. So you can use basically the existing gangway, similar to how you get down to the existing landing float. We're just basically re-orient, orientating that float to this new orientation. So it's going from the existing Morse Pier, you know, that's off of the driveway into Mascanomo and then you can then walk down around and they'll connect into the existing Reed Park floats.
And can you be clear, clear which of the alternatives you're recommending?
3A.
3, one, 3A?
Preferred alternative is 3A.
So you're referring to the one on screen?
Page 11. Yeah, what, what is the, the alternative that you're looking at?
3A. Page 11.
Page 11, preferred alternative, okay. So 3A is your preferred alternative?
Correct, I'm just double checking. Can you do this here?
I think that's, I think that's correct.
Yes.
Sorry, everyone.
Okay, go ahead, go back to the, the preferred alternative, I guess. Questions from the board?
There was a question that I couldn't answer. Is that Gordon?
Yeah.
So I think your question was, how do you get down onto the floats?
Yeah, this is, by the way, I did, I agree with your analysis. I think this one is the least impactful and probably best use of the, of the horse, but if you wouldn't mind.
Sure, sure, yeah, so this does take advantage of the dredging that the town and, and the state paid for in 2017, 18. It is in that dredge footprint. So you can access either, if you were to go down to Morse Pier today, looking out the Fisherman's Pier, there's a ramp on the right that goes down to a float with two lobster boats. That's, that would be the same location approximately on that side of the, the pier going down onto the floats. Or alternatively, you could go over to Reed Park and go down the existing ramp there.
And the pilings are 20 feet above mean low water, is that what I'm reading? On all of both these projects?
Let's see.
So I need to know.
How far above mean low water are the pilings? And how far above the street level are the pilings? I can't, we can't read them.
So they'll, they'll match existing Reed Park piles in material and elevations.
Yeah, so this matches the existing Reed Park float pile and also meets the FEMA thunderstorm elevation. If I zoom in.
And why pilings instead of anchors or, or some sort of non-piling?
So if, if we were to put this on floats, the movement would be too great for the ramp, the existing ramp. It never would have been signed off on. We would have lost, depending on wind direction, we'd have lost room in the harbor or we'd have lost room between the floats and the shore, potentially taking away that required minimum clearance from the mud line. And these are also infinitely safer. I wouldn't, if there's a storm coming, in many cases, when there's been a storm coming, boats from Area 7 have been able to come in and tie up safely at Reed Park Dock during the storm. If this were a mooring-supported facility, I never would have been able to do that.
Is there any kind of policy that this is available to mooring holders in storm events and not to transients? Or is that, how's that work?
So it's been just mooring holders so far. I have had people call from other communities and try to rent space during the storm. But my, my policy, and there's nothing in rules and rights, is to allow boaters from Area 7 to come in and use those docks, so it's our boaters.
I have another question, but other questions, go ahead, Laura.
Well, one is, and they're unrelated to each other, when is, how does this fit within the harbor master plan?
Well, the harbor master plan is lagging still.
Okay, so it hasn't really addressed this area yet, is there any kind of overall statement about?
No, but I think we should, no, unfortunately. Except that, so the question was, how, that Laura was asking is how does this fit within harbor master plan? Except for the fact that mooring list length is of great concern to the people who came to the.
The length of the list, not the length of the boat.
The length of the list and the fact that people sit on it for decades. And so that's a different kind of public access. I also have a, I have another question, but I thought a little bit about this. How do you, it's just so much infrastructure in a storm, to maintain at winters. And we're, you know, when I look at it, I, I think, so the, and then the other thing is you have kids playing at the playground at Mascanomo Park. First of all, there is a pedestrian walkway across to Reed Park, it's along the sidewalk. But tox point, we know that one out of 20 kids goes down the dock without a life jacket. And now you've got a playground next door and a dock with all kinds of the lures of dockness. And boats coming and going and I, I, I'm, I really worry about a thousand long, 1,000 feet of dock by the time you go from Morse Pier, 800, whatever it is, all the way around with kids and boats and, and to me, it doesn't, it doesn't add safety. I don't buy, it doesn't add safety on traffic, it doesn't add safety on pedestrians. Having a hard, so I'd like FOS to help us understand, you're the consultant and you've done these. Help us understand why this is adding safety to the harbor traffic and to the, to the whole, the whole area. And then I have one more comment. Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a response from the FOS consultants based on their work in this kind of project.
Sure, well, especially for the Morse portion of the harbor, it's, as we said, this is intended to alleviate the congestion. So relocating berths from, from just existing traffic, relocating the berths to the proposed Morse project, it will reduce the navigational hazards. And there's a little bit more open space for them to navigate as well. Let me go back to.
Children already go down on those docks as well. We see children down on the fishermen's floats on both sides often. We have children that, teenagers that jump and dive and swim off the pier. And what's changed with all of that is there's staff down there. There are staff members working on the docks. They very much understand how we manage those docks and the messaging that we give to people who come down, to the young people that jump off the pier. And one of the advantages of having the fishermen's floats go around, that's commercial, those are commercial boats. But our staff will be able to walk around, all the way around to the other side and be there to either directly interact with children, if it's children who are running down away from their parents unattended, or with the parents, going over to the parents and saying, hey, listen, if you're going to come down on these docks, you need to go back up and get one of the life jackets on the lender tender rack right there at Morse Pier. I think a, a real safety benefit was, starting in 2019 and continues today and will be, is the fact that we have staff people down there helping, assisting, directing, making sure that people are being as safe as they can possibly be.
I have one other comment, that is, do we have a rendering of what this looks like from Beach Street? With the pilings, because I, this is, this seems quite different from the, along the railroad tracks. We spend a lot of time in our, we will spend some time probably in our next public hearing talking about views from a highway. And this is a view from our downtown. So I'm wondering if you've done a, a rendering of what that will look like.
We have not, that wasn't considered in part of FOS scope, but we could certainly add it to their scope of work if that was something the planning board wanted to see.
I think what we should do is maybe, we're going to take a site walk out there and I know that it's going to be, we probably have some public comment. Let's, wait, any more comments from the board, it's like Laura has called out these two because they're kind of a package.
Sure, this is really related to construction, not the permanent plant. But I'm looking at the utility site plant S102 for Reed Park, so going back to the previous project. And I'm seeing, yeah, maybe you could bring up S102. Right, so at the top of that drawing is a proposed six-foot wide utility trench through the center of the park, if I'm reading that correctly. And I'm just looking at the underlying Google photos and thinking about stewardship of the park. So you have several large mature trees in there and I'm thinking about critical root zone and the potential for impact on the park trees with that six-foot wide utility trench. So this may be diagrammatic to be verified, but I think it's important to look at the best route for the utilities that does the least harm to the park's mature trees.
So this utility, the proposed trench, it avoids all the existing trees in the park and it just goes through grass?
Well, the grass may have tree critical root zone, so I think an arborist, you know, if we have a town arborist or an independent arborist could verify that because the, it needs to be out from, you know, under the drip line and there are also some best practices about how you actually trench within tree root zones to avoid harm. So I think that would be a valuable service for an arborist to be taking a look at this and providing recommendations to the town.
Yeah, we can certainly do that and I'll note that, you know, because it will be a force main, you know, so it's going to be pumped, it doesn't have to, you know, be a, a direct straight line, so.
Yeah, great.
We would have some flexibility in, in routing it, you know, around, you know, if we did encounter a large root or things like that, that we can, you know, generally avoid it because it would be a, you know.
So it's just water and electricity or is there sewer too? Sewer?
Sewer two.
Because.
Yeah, sewer.
Because of a pump out?
Correct.
And where's the pump out?
Down on the far end is where I've always envisioned it, as far from the park as possible. Down where we would keep the majority of our public safety vessels at the end of the dock.
All right, Sue and Chris, any comments or questions right now on these two? All right, let's take any comments from the public on these two. We're going to probably be another, excuse me, cell signaling, we'll probably have another 10 minutes before 7:30. Okay, thanks, any public comments? Gail, help me online.
Thea needs to take, to give up the screen so I can see what's happening. Thanks, Thea.
Okay, yeah, I can see it too.
I don't see any hands up.
Mr. Gates?
I've got several comments on the.
Can you state your name and?
Tim Gates, Tim has been on with us. I'm listening to the presentation, doesn't sound like they paid any attention to the dire forecast of climate change raising the surface level of the harbor water considerably over the next five decades. And I've got no idea if the bottom of the harbor rises in Tansu faster or not as fast. But whatever it does, it is highly toxic, especially in the inner harbor where it is so toxic that when we dredge it, we have to take the soil out, well out to sea to get rid of it. I've been told that it's too toxic for landfill. I don't know, but swimming in this inner harbor with the increase of land-based infrastructure, water-based traffic, has gone to do anything but worse in the coming decades. has gone into doing anything but worse in the coming decades and making the water even more unhealthy. Using the shingles to launch kayaks sounds like a great idea, but it definitely wouldn't be a place for children to go and play and splash around in this toxic water.
Okay, great. Um, let me just, can I ask Foss if they've done any, um, excuse me, let me, let's just ask the consultant if they did any, um, toxicity tests or if there's, uh, if, if there's a, um, concern about toxicity that would be stirred up with pilings or other from this project? Do we still have faith on board on?
Fiona?
Fiona.
Yes.
Fiona, sorry.
Uh, no problem. So we, when we were doing it, doing the initial survey, um, and we did soil moorings to test the existing conditions on the site. And we also have the dredging results, so no toxicity is not a concern at this site.
Great, thank you. Um, Maury?
Yeah, a question.
I'll give your name and address.
Yeah, Maury, grade 37, Proctor Street, Manchester. Um, a question and then a comment. So first the question, um, when you showed the new pier configuration at, um, at the fisherman's dock, it looked like there were four by 30 foot finger piers sticking out. And I was curious with those, those would be for fishing boats that are currently on moorings, if that's correct. And would those moorings now be available for people who are on the waiting list and trying to get moorings in Manchester?
Yeah, so the, thanks Maury. Uh, the, the goal, uh, moving what would probably be our most senior lobsterman into both spots would be to, uh, we have a waitlist for, uh, commercial operators, uh, looking for a space in Manchester. Uh, what I'd really like to see is to get, um, the number back up to what it was when I first started here. So we'd move six, maybe seven, uh, of the lobster boats in. It wouldn't be all big ones, uh, obviously the space would take, take that a couple would be the smaller ones. But then we could then bring two or three, um, of the lobstermen who are on the waitlist for a spot in to bring the town back up to that, uh, same strength, same number we had back in 2012, 2011.
I guess just to follow on, is there sufficient parking for that fishing activity at Masconoma Park, given all of the other activity there? And then I have a comment.
Good, good. Good question, uh, there was in 2012. So as far as 2024 goes, uh, I think we all know parking is a huge challenge.
Are there any parking changes contemplated with this plan?
I, I don't take any parking into consideration. I, for me, the parking is parking for boats. As far as the, uh, commercial lobstermen, one of the reasons I didn't want to bring in more than the number that were here when I started is partly because of that, because of the, the, uh, the issue with space up on land. But I didn't, I didn't think it would be unfair to try to get as close to that original number as possible. We certainly have enough on commercial waitlists to, to do that.
Okay, um, do you have a quick comment?
I had a quick comment and it was really about the pilings. And, um, there was a drawing that was a little hard to see showing elevation of pilings. And I think you said they were 12 to 14 inches in diameter steel. And, and I think we started to see those showing up in Manchester. And there was also a comment made about perhaps a rendering being made or available. And I would strongly consider that there be a rendering put together so people have an understanding of what this is going to look like. I think we've taken a harbor that is absolutely one of the gems on the coast of New England and we've transformed it into something that looks like a small marina. And, um, when you look at the pilings as you come into Manchester Harbor by Tuck's Point and as you come down this harbor and you look at these green pilings, they are here for a long time. And I just feel that we ought to go into this eyes open and understand what these pilings look like. As you come down Union Street and you look straight down Manchester Harbor at Marblehead Light in the distance, you now have pilings all over the place and there will be more and more of them. And I realize there is an economic advantage of $150,000 a year in staffing to help with that. But at the end of the day, are we putting ourselves in a position where we've given up so much that this town has to look at for an economic gain that maybe should be questioned a little more carefully? So I would strongly recommend we get some renderings of what these pilings look like from Union Street and from Masconoma Park and understand where this is going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, let's, um, jump to one more set of pilings. Uh, who is, um, who do I need to give the, um, control to or Fiona, do you have the? Jim, do I need to give?
Jimmy, yeah, he can give it to me.
Jim.
Okay.
Jimmy.
Thank you Fiona.
I'm sorry, Ann has a comment, sorry. Sorry, Ann.
Ann Harrison.
What about the height, the, Mr. Gates is, Ann Harrison, 13 Tuck's Point Road. Mr. Gates is concerned about ti, um, sea level rise. The pilings are as tall as they are to deal with the projected sea level rise in the next 50 years. So, no, the bottom probably won't come up that much. And the park will certainly flood, but the intention is to have the pilings tall enough that even with a major storm, we're not going to have floats and boats traveling around the harbor alone, unmoored.
Thank you. Um, let's move, we're going to move to the, uh, we'll have, they are not going to close this out tonight, so don't, don't, um, let's jump to the rotunda, we do have a lot to get. And we have Jimmy Hill from Foss to guide us through that one.
Yeah, thanks for having me, Jimmy Hill with, uh, Public Infrastructure and Environment. Guess say like you're from Green Bay. All right, we're going to hit share here, all right, everybody see my screen, I've got the, just the application up. Uh, so this is from Tuck's Point, Tuck's Point, uh, phase two of the, uh, public dock facility project on behalf of the town of Manchester, right, see.
I'm sorry, can you just, um, shrink down your, uh, make this bigger and shrink down your table contents on the left?
Sure, I'll be jumping around as well, so.
So you can see as much of it as we can.
Yep, yep, no problem, you can see that, I'm just highlighting the area here, uh, and, and we'll get into some other photos and all that. So, uh, here's the existing, um, um, rotunda and solid fill pier and timber pier coming out. This actually is a photo from 2020 when we first did our inspection of the site. Uh, and it showed, you know, some, some, uh, some piles that were unsatisfactory, um, that need to be replaced. And obviously the site has kind of changed over time, had some, um, uh, some weather events. And, uh, if you've been down to the site, you see that it's broke off currently. Uh, so I'm going to jump over to our existing conditions plan. This will be on page 149 of the application. Um, so we can see here, it's the existing, uh, timber, timber structure, uh, with, with the rotunda. Uh, we've got a solid fill paper lined, uh, ramp leading up to it. Um, and then the, uh, the existing decking, uh, there's some broken decking in there and some piles underneath. Uh, this is the existing elevation of the deck here, I'll zoom in so everybody can see. We've got 14.1 mi, uh, mean low water, be mean low water. So that's, uh, about two feet under the existing FEMA AE zone. Um, and so we're proposing to replace this with a, uh, this timber, timber structure with a steel structure in the exact same footprint. Uh, the only thing that's really changing with the footprint is that we're reducing the number of piles. We're going from, uh, a total of 36 12 inch timber piles, we're reducing that to 17 steel pipe piles. Uh, and we propose to raise the deck at elevation of five feet. So that'd be 19 feet mean low water. And that's, uh, about two feet above that AE 12 zone. Uh, in order to get up to this deck elevation, we're going to have to, uh, angle up the structure and we're going to have to build a small angle on the solid fill as well. It'll be a one on 20 slope, uh, starting at, let's see, starting down here, we, it's a slope, uh, continues up through the, the steel structure which will have the same timber facade, same design, um, as, as, as existing. Um, and actually will be the same rotunda, so the rotunda will be taken off and then put, put back on. Uh, it'll be safely stored. Uh, as part of this project two, there will be, um, uh, the existing gangway platform will be raised and there'll be some steel structure added to that, uh, to enhance it. And I will jump now to a model, we do have a model of this project and I think everybody would like to see that. Uh, so this is how the view changes slightly. Um, it actually enhances the view by reducing the number of piles, the steel pipe piles. These will be, uh, piles to match the, uh, the piles that were placed as phase one of the project where they, they kind of reconfigured the, uh, floating, the floating dock zone over there. Uh, those are the same steel, uh, let's see if we can see here, yeah, perfect, great. The steel pipe piles, and these are just renders, not photos, so they have caps on them and everything. Um, so to kind of, to summarize here, we also have a, uh, order of conditions for the project from Conservation Commission. Um, and we have a chapter 91 minor mod. So, uh, we applied to chapter 91 full license and they came back with a minor mod to an unlicensed, uh, structure. Uh, and they, they said that, you know, we're, we're doing the right thing by raising the, the rotunda to that elevation. And, and no, and no less, and then staying within the footprint, um, you know, from aerial footprint and reducing the footprint of, um, of impacts with the steel pipe piles. Um, if you are going through the alternates, this is on page 20 of the application, oh, page, sorry, page 19. Uh, the selected alternative is 1B, uh, and that is a steel structure maintaining the existing pier footprint. Uh, 17 piles at a rock order magnitude cost of 2.3 million and that's all I have.
Thanks Jimmy.
Questions from, uh, the board?
So if I may, this is Gordon again, so I went through the analysis that you did and what we're effectively ending up with is the rotunda built on a platform or, uh, up, higher up in the air, correct? Is it, is it as simple as that?
Correct. Yeah, and, uh, and it's a steel structure with timber facade instead of it, the existing timber, uh, that's out there. Uh, which the anticipated service life for steel is about 50 years. So we get a little bit more life out of it for, uh, for what we're building.
Same footprint, same walkway and the access to all the, the new docks that are out there and floating docks will be the same as it is right now.
Yeah, so as part of phase one, there was a, a new gangway that was secured and this gangway, uh, was, was, um, purchased by the town or however. Got it, uh, with, with this project in mind, with raising the, uh, rotunda so that it, it will, it'll fit that project too.
A question about the slope of the walkway that's being increased, how, what did you say, what's the increase in the slope there?
It'll be a one on 20 slope, so I can go back to, like, and so we've got quite a bit of, let me just see here. So we'll start with the existing, the existing is more flat, it's actually just flat. Uh, and then the proposed will come up, uh, with a one on 20 to, to meet that grade. We couldn't do it all with the solid fill, it'd be too steep, so the, uh, the steel structure will be angled to. So it's a one on 20 all the way through the solid fill, uh, up until you get to an elevation 19 feet.
And so that slope is ADA compliant? That's, that's, uh, great, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Laura, uh, this is Laura, is the, um, length, is the run of the slope also compliant? What, how long is that 20, how long is that 5% slope?
90 feet.
90 feet, so I think you need a landing? Or is that, no, I guess you're in a ramp, so it should be okay.
True, right.
That is a long run. I think it's important to get the details right on, you know, it's a historic structure overall, I think, like, I have no comment on the raising it above the sea level rise and so forth. Um, there have been some modifications made to the structure, like the access to the, the sort of gangway to the, um, to the float below where the kind of historic gate was removed and just some pressure treated, kind of two by four, you know, rails were inserted in its place. And so these are details, but in terms of the finish of the, um, retaining wall and the, you know, the woodwork on the rails and gates and so forth, I think we should, um, look carefully at detailing that correctly so that it doesn't feel like it's, you took the parts apart and put them back together in a way that is not, um, good stewardship of that historic resource.
So, yeah, and the, the whole idea is to maintain the aesthetic, right? I mean, we, we're really just raising the structure, making it so that that landed, or the, you know, the, the ramp works with the structure, uh, works with the, the floats, the gangway down to the floats and this is an alternative the town landed on. And yeah, we do propose that, you know, we're, we're matching the existing facade on the outside. And then also with the, you know, there'd be a little bit more solid fill coming up above what is existing. Um, and so, yeah, in, in the plans, we do propose to match that to existing. Um, and, and we've found some contractors out there that do a really good job of that, um, just, you know, matching the, uh, historic, his, uh, historic aesthetic.
And that steel stringer, does that have any kind of a skirt over or do you just have to get the side of the stringer?
Yeah, that, that's shown right here, uh, the decorative timber fissure.
Okay.
Yep. So that'd be very similar to what's, what's out there now, the, the white paneling.
So, um, Jimmy, I think one of the things that was addressed here, uh, the, the quick and easy, uh, deck and pressure treated deck and railings on the landing that goes down to the floats, it would be important that we have, and it may well already be, but have the matching rail, matching decking, uh, to the rest of the facility.
Yeah, that cut, uh, cutout that goes down the gangway on the left as you're approaching the rotunda is pretty coarsely done in contrast to the rest of the, um, more, more ornamental lumber. So that would be corrected. And then the granite stones get picked up and relayed and all of the same materials go back down.
Yeah, okay, Gordon is good.
So I, I have a, this is a, an aesthetic question about the rotunda itself. It's been there for a long time. The idea of taking it down and then putting it on shore until the platform is built and then reconstructing it. I assume you've done analysis on the, on the rotunda itself to see that, that in fact can happen?
But as part of the alternatives analysis, they, they did look into that rather than building a new, um, we, rather, we did look into that rather than building a completely new rotunda. Um, I believe this is a simple crane pick. I do have Ben Folion, I'm not sure if he has an answer after this exact question, but he did work through some of these alternatives. Um, so I'm not sure if it's just a simple crane pick, um, or there's maybe more involved.
Yeah, just, if you can hear me, just want to make sure before I start talking.
We got you.
Uh, yeah, so our, our structural designer, uh, came up with a couple of different alternatives for the pick. Uh, so it was either build this steel structure underneath as a temporary lift or he really recommended, uh, taking it down in pieces so we can, like, that, that straight, straight up lift with, uh, the steel framing kind of messes with the structure itself, so it's almost better to take it apart and then build it back together, take it apart in pieces and build it back together. So it will be the, the same structure and then that way they can replace elements that need to be replaced, uh, if they see any like damage or rot or, yeah, any, any individual pieces that need to be, be restored.
Thanks Ben.
Sue or, um, Chris, any comments or questions? No, okay.
Can I just ask one last question?
Uh, Peter, yeah, go first.
Byon, you mentioned, uh, grants being available for Morse and Reed Park construction. Is there any potential for grants with this project?
Yeah, so with pure 100% of Reed Park, uh, Super Economic Council.
uh, Seaport Economic Council gave eighty percent of the cost of the engineering permitting for the Fishman's Facility and, uh, for, uh, the rotunda. And when they do that, they expect you to come back and apply for construction funding up to eighty percent. So, up, and that's up to a million dollars to the Seaport Economic Council. There's also another potential grant opportunity through coastal zone management, uh, which could, um, get us a lot closer to the two point three million dollars for this project. Now, I say all this, but if, if the state doesn't like Manchester's plan for the MBTA, then at least the Seaport Economic Council grant will not be available to us. We would not get that, uh, million dollars.
Thank you.
So, and that, I'm not sure if that affects the coastal zone management grant. Uh, I suspect it would, so then we'd be looking at, uh, some other funding, uh, reality.
Okay, um, any comments from the public, and I'm gonna limit any comments to two minutes, um, on the rotunda only?
I have a question to the rotunda.
Oh, hold on, uh, okay, um, Mrs. Gates, go ahead. Um, I'm gonna ask that you speak just to the rotunda and, thank you.
School Street and Desmond, and after question, uh, to the gentleman who just said if we don't have the MBTA plan voted for, then they might not give us that, that has nothing to do with housing, why the rotunda will be excluded?
Chris, you, or Sue, you want to explain that? Or my, uh, Mark, maybe? I'm gonna let Mark explain. So the question, if you could in here, uh, was why does the grant for the rotunda have anything to do with the MBTA housing?
So if, um, the town does not pass the MBTA zoning bylaw that's been drafted and, um, and by the end of the year, we would be deemed noncompliant with the law, section three A. And, um, for being noncompliant, we would no longer be eligible for a, a long list of state grants. And, um, this is according, would be, uh, one of them, so.
Is that cor- is that allowed really to be done by the state to the towns and cities?
Yes, it's, uh, it's, the grants are from the state.
It's like a punishment?
And the, the grants are from the state, various offices at the state offer grants to cities and towns under the condition that you meet other requirements, whether it's a grant application requirement or a requirement of another law. So I'm sure obtaining the special permits required by the town for these, uh, from the planning board for these are a requirement of the application, just as, uh, being in compliance with section three A is a requirement for grants as well.
Okay, so, um, we need to continue these hearings. Um, I'm sorry, I, I was way, way furiously.
Ann Harrison, thirteen, text, my word. Are the materials that you're working from available to the rest of us?
Yes, they are. Either in my office or I believe Gail has a set of them as well.
Will you put them up as Hal Clark?
Yes, um, that would be also filed with the Clark.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Um, and I guess the other thing is, are they available electronically? Cause some of the, um, a lot of the numbers are too small to read. Or I need a magnifying glass, like the depths of, um, so if we-
On the outside of the floats.
Right, outside of the floats and all kinds of important details. Um, so maybe we can get one, one, uh, copy electronically, and then we can also put them on the website.
You have electronic copies in today's, uh, meeting packet.
Meeting packet, okay.
On SharePoint.
Yeah.
Excuse me, SharePoint is not generally available.
No, no, we'll put, so we'll get it on, so we have it electronically. We now need to put it in a generally available place.
Put it up on the, uh, web.
Yeah.
Planning Board, but.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so we need to continue this hearing, um, Gary's not here. Um, it looks like July ninth is going to be a better date, that's the Tuesday, instead of July eighth, um, for people, for this, and cell signaling. Um, can we continue to, to July ninth if that's a, kind of, ends up being a problem? Is that gonna, I guess we, we could meet quickly at nine. And then let's schedule a site walk between now and then.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm good, does that work for people? I think that works, Sue and, um, Chris, I think that worked for you. Okay, great. So we're gonna-
First for me.
Okay, great.
The ninth in lieu of the eighth.
In lieu of the eighth, because the eighth has a problem for, more problems. Um, so we're gonna continue to, uh, the July ninth, um, with a public hearing, with a site walk to be scheduled between now and then. Um, I also, I think we're, maybe we can take it up at the end, but I think we're gonna wanna see a rendering, the view issue, um, the issues that came up, the financial analysis, the mooring, the net mooring count of the two, I think the two projects together. And, um, a little bit more about the historic, uh, maybe ask the Historic Commission or some, a little bit more of a narrative about the historic, uh, renovations. And I think I've just circled them all, they are all within our special permit criteria. Maybe we can talk about how that happens, um, okay? Oh, uh-
Would it be possible to forward the, um, questions to both, um, just so we can-
Sure.
Know what information would be helpful to provide?
We will, great, okay, thank you. Um, at this point, I'll take a motion to, uh, continue this public hearing to, I think we'll do six thirty again. Yeah, uh, because, uh, Sue, you look like you're gonna say something.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Great, okay, thank you. Great, thank you everybody for, uh, your time, and I think, so just thank you, Byon.
Good night, everybody.
Or Nate, thank you.
Penny.
Nate, thank you.
And Fiona and Jimmy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks all, have a good night.
Penny's great.
Okay, uh, tell, somebody, maybe we can take a-
Uh, schedule the site walk.
Yeah, we will, oh, Dave.
Oh, well, I, before they left.
Before they left.
Yes.
I think we'll have to get back to them, because we, I wanna keep this moving.
They left.
Some air is on, uh, can somebody grab, maybe we can take a quick stretch? Stand up, everybody.
Sounds good.
And, um, can some, oh, you're here, can you send Mar, uh, Mark Globski in? Folks, please? Stretch.
Just for consideration requirement?
Yes.
Is your watching, is your watching, telling you to stop?
Screens now.
Yes.
What? Wow. Well.
How do-
Sarah, it's Gail.
Hi, Gail.
May I remind you of something?
Yes, absolutely.
All the materials that are in SharePoint are also in the meeting packet, um, online in, for the planning board.
Okay.
So every meeting, meeting packet has all the materials, they're, they're in SharePoint and they're also in a meeting packet.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you for putting them there, that's, I know it takes a while. Okay. Okay, great. Okay, great, um, we're going to reconvene the public hearing for cell signaling technologies. Thank you for your patience, once again. You can just take three special permits. Um, thank you, welcome, Mark Globski.
You're welcome.
And your team. Oh, um, who should I share, is, uh, who's, Matt, who's that?
Matt Connors.
Are you on yet?
Matt, are you on?
No, 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 no.
Okay, just make sure you sign in without your audio. So any preamble while he's signing in?
Uh, not much of a preamble, except for the fact that, uh, as the agenda states, tonight's, um, meeting is for the purpose of, uh, reviewing civil engineering, stormwater, and landscaping as it relates to the cell signaling site. Uh, this series of meetings is designed to confirm that we're satisfying the performance standards that are set forth in the zoning bylaw. So tonight, essentially, we're talking about, uh, performance standards that are in sections six point three six, six point three seven, and six point three ten. And making the presentation tonight will be Matt Connors, behind me again, from Hancock Associates. Uh, he'll be followed by Josh Wilson, who is a senior ecologist at Biohabitats. And he will explain how his hard work has informed our last speaker, Lynn Geisler, who will talk about the remarkable landscaping plan for the, uh, site that is not terribly attractive at the moment. Uh, so that's how we're gonna proceed, and we'll start with Matt.
Okay, so, Matt, are you on?
Almost.
Almost. Oh, there you are, okay. I think you have your audio on. No, it can't be muted, it has to be joint. Well, we'll see.
Muted.
So you're gonna go to the little carrot by audio and say join without audio, join by phone. Okay, so you're, you're not echoing, sounds good.
All right, is that better?
Oh, well, he's, uh, working on that. Have you received anything from the finance committee?
Have we received anything from the finance committee?
Are you still expecting something from the finance committee?
Yes, we should check in with them.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Yeah. There you go.
Good?
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, um, I'm Matt Connors, Hancock Associates. Um, so the, 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 the thing I'm gonna start off and talk about civil, go through, um, some items then. Uh, Josh is our columnist, who is online, who's gonna run through some stuff. And then we have Lynn to close us out with, uh, escape arc tricks. Uh, so. There we go. Um, so I was gonna go through the standards for the special permit. And, let's see, there we go. So lighting, we're gonna talk about on the eighth, so I'm not gonna touch on that. Noise, I'll touch on. Topographical standards and clearing, uh, site development standards. Pedestrian vehicle access was talked about at the last meeting on the tenth. Aesthetics is gonna be talked about on July eighth. Landscaping, walls and fences, that's gonna be Biohabitats in twenty one twelve. And then utilities, uh, security and emergency services, I can touch on that. And fiscal impact, we talked about on the tenth, so everybody good with what I'm gonna cover.
Except that we may continue to the ninth instead of the eighth, just, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we come back to that.
We can, we can make it work.
Great.
Uh, so standard two noise, um, talks about unreasonable impact on neighboring properties. So the interesting thing about this property is there's not a lot of neighbors, but we do intend to have our standard hours of operation between eight and five. Um, and we would like a waiver for construction to start earlier, and this relates back to the school of impacts, and we can talk about that at least. Um, so as I said, we don't have a lot of neighbors. Um, our property is this big chunk of dirt. Um, our, the neighbors to the north is a basically, uh, storage facility. Um, and then we have the, um, Tomville Brook and its associated wetlands in this area. Uh, these guys over here, this is the doctor's office, this is the future DPO, you say. Our, and obviously we have the MAC down below. Our nearest residential neighbors are over here on the other side of one twenty eight. So normal operations shouldn't be impacting any of our neighbors. Um, and construction activities shouldn't be impacting any of our neighbors. Item three, uh, topographical standards and clearing. So this is talking about unnecessarily altering, altering topography and drainage, minimizing disturbances in natural habitat ecosystems, and providing natural buffers along the progress. Everybody's been to the site, this is our natural habitat. Um, it's a quarry, it's been blasted and, um, all kinds of disturbance that have, that happened on this project. Just went through several photos, this is over where the proposed, uh, parking garage is gonna be. Again, it's all disturbed. And this is looking from the top of the cliff, um, out over, uh, the monuments and the, this is our, uh, our neighbor, um, with the, um, storage facility. And this is again at the top of the cliff looking down the truck. But you can see it's just a big, open, disturbed area that we're working in. And I can, I'm gonna get a little bit into how we're trying to place everything so that we're not adding to more of this disturbance. Lynn's really gonna touch on that, we gotta get just the key together with all kinds of cool stuff. Um, but when you look at our disturbed site, this is it, it's this whole piece here, and what we're proposing to do is almost entirely within that area. Looking at it from a larger perspective, uh, again, we have, this is our site here, this is our neighbor, this is our other neighbor over here. And we have not a lot of anybody else within the area, so our natural features, you can see all the, the areas that are undisturbed throughout the, versus the areas that we have disturbed that we're working in.
Okay, before I leave this slide.
Oh, sure.
Um, please, what is that rectangle pink parcel that's on the cleared area, twenty eight, yeah, what is that?
So, uh, many years ago, well, not many years ago, but years ago, um, there was a separate parcel here. Um, it has since been combined. Um, this was grabbed from SGIS, which has not been updated to date. But that, that rectangle here is absorbed, is hanging up correctly.
I believe it was because the MAC wanted to have their sector system.
You know more than I about.
But I could be wrong.
So, standard four, site development standards. This gets into talking about preserving and enhancing the natural features of the site. Um, it's in the site design, placement of the buildings, facilities, clearing for utilities. Placement of buildings, preventing impacts to rare endangered species, there aren't any. Um, sustainability and resilience. Um, archaeological and historical resources, again, there aren't any. Um, preservation of existing vegetation, Lynn's gonna really talk about that. Um, revegetation, again, and limited clear. So earlier I showed you the aerial of all the disturbed areas. And this is the site plan, and it gets into a little bit of color here. Uh, but as far as the overall site, all the zoning buffers are being maintained. No variance is required for the zoning buffers at all. The area that we're clearing is basically, everybody walked this with me the other, the, when we went to the site, this ringer over here was that path that we walked. It's all cleared, it's all disturbed. Up in this area, even this-
Matt, I can barely, I can barely see that cursor.
No, I will point you at that. I don't touch the screen. So this area up in here, this is, uh, it's cleared as it's, we walked this, this is where we're gonna have the parking area. this is where we're gonna have the parking area. And even further up in here, off-screen, it's still disturbed. Outside of that area is in its natural state, we're not touching it. This area here, we're trying to restore back to a normal-ish state. There is a, this whole area down here is gonna be buffered. It's natural trees in there. And then the area within where the majority of our infrastructure is going is basically currently disturbed. So the dark green is basically what is out there right now for natural vegetation. The lighter green, all of this is what we're restoring with either plantings, or grasses, or natives. And then where we have other areas, like this is our wetlands, this is our basin, this is our planted basin, here's another basin here. And then you see where we have interior landscaping pieces. At the end of the day, there's gonna be more green on the site than there is right now. As far as endangered species or anything of that nature, the nearest one is up here. Here is our site. This is Sawmill Brook. This is the wetland. On the other end of the wetland, we have an endangered species. The nearest fertile pool is over here, and up there. Again, nothing's on our site that we're touching. We do have a cold water fisher. That's on Sawmill Brook. Don't ask me which species it's from. Michael is very much focused on making sure that it's a shrimp in that area of emergency. But this does impact our stormwater design. So in addition to the cold water fisheries, I'm gonna touch on, I'm gonna come back to that, but the site is, well, the project is gonna be need architecture next week, or next two weeks, so we'll talk about that. But our resiliency, our stormwater is being designed for the 2090 storm, not the 2030 storm. Yes?
Which storm in 2090 is your design storm? You're gonna get to that.
Yes, I'm gonna get that.
All the Stevie Thunder.
All of it. So nowadays, we're designing for 2030, which is, you go, the one year is three inches, the hundred year is nine point two inches. We're doing 2090, which the one year is 3.8 inches. The hundred year is seventeen, is, sorry, 11.7 inches. The hundred-year storm is our 25-year storm, essentially. So all of our basins are bigger, all of our infrastructure is bigger, all of our TSS design is bigger. When we get into. So stormwater is designed to manage that. These areas up here go down to this basin. This whole piece bends up coming down here and going out to the wetland over here. I have another slide that kind of discusses the TSS on this a little bit more.
Can you make sure you don't use abbreviations? So total suspended solids.
Sure. Sorry. If I say entity, yell at me too.
Because people who are watching and people who maybe not in this world.
Yep, understood. So this becomes how we're doing our treatment. We have, we're total suspended solids. So there's a couple of different factors that come into play because we have a cold water fishery. So we have to have forty, forty-four percent of total suspended solids removed from the system before we get to the infiltration basin. We also have a parking garage, which has to have a oil-water separator. So as we've broken the site up into a couple of different pieces. This is our parking garage. This is our oil-water separator. This parking garage goes through the oil-water separator, and then you see this basin over here. This basin is lined, it's not an infiltration basin. Everything in this area comes down and goes into the infiltration basin.
Did you say that was a lined basin?
Yes.
Or it's a holding basin, say?
This area, all comes down, comes in here. This overflows into this outlet control structure, and it's gonna go that way. This piece right here is basically our utility yard. We've got a lot of trucks and stuff in there too. Change from this goes into an oil-water separator. And it doesn't go this way, it actually goes that way. This building here has roof runoff. We're using the roof runoff for our irrigation system. So there's a.
He's twenty-five.
So a 25,000 gallon tank that gets filled up for roof runoff and used for irrigation. Whatever doesn't go into the tank, it overflows into the system and heads to that. We have another little area here. This is primarily grass areas and pedestrian areas. This goes into this main run. And this main runs from, so basically, anything on this side of the site has had ample total suspended solids treatment. So it goes down into the infiltration basin. Coming over here, we're taking this piece, and this comes down into our planted basin. Again, this one's lined. This all comes down in here, goes into that piece. Phase two building, clean, goes into that piece as well. This overflows into the infiltration basin. This area through here, this is the one last little area that we couldn't get to go anything relatively easy. So that has its own oil-water separator for total suspended solids treatment. That goes into the infiltration basin. That infiltration basin is sized for infiltration for the entire site. Everything from that basin overflows through an outlet control structure, and that goes into this wetland. This all mimics what's going on up there right now as a first storm.
How much of the runoff of the, outside of your scope of work, but MAC and Atwater Ave are also gonna get captured just because of overland flood?
It, so the MAC doesn't drain in our direction at all. It goes to Atwater, Atwater heads. So the MAC is over here. The MAC generally goes in this direction, maybe a little bit of it. But the majority of the parking areas are here.
Just runs off into the brook.
It's either going into the brook, or it's going down to Atwater, which will eventually be.
Okay. So you said, follow that up. So you're not adding any off-site water to your system? You're not free.
So the MAC is a separate parcel?
No, I know, but I just, sometimes there's a benefit that. Okay, just a few clarify questions. So it's 2090, 25-year storm, that's your design storm?
Yes.
Which is roughly equivalent to today's.
The 29, 2090 series of storms.
Yeah.
Are our design storms.
Including up to the 100-year storm.
Including up to the 100-year storm.
Okay, I thought you were saying the 25-year storm of 2090 was your design storm.
So, so when you design, we're looking at runoff from all these, these storm events. So we're sizing our infrastructure based upon what's going on hydraulically with that for those storms. Sometimes we can get away with sizing the utility conduit for the 25-year storm. It's actually allowed in your program. It can get funky when you model it, so that some of this stuff bypasses and goes to the next section, so we're getting into that a little bit. But when, when this is designed, we basically move towards the, right to the 100-year for modeling pieces. There are, I think there's like one catchphrase, where it backs up a little bit, but it doesn't get to the top, and that's when you get to the 100-year storm.
Okay.
If you're on a 100-year storm, you get a lot of other things going on too.
And oil water, yeah. Okay, great, thank you. And then the question, so you're treating 100% of the water onsite?
Yes.
It's all managed, okay. And then you had said 44% of the total suspended solids were removed before the infiltration basin?
Right, and that's.
And then what's the, coming out of the infiltration to the, do you have?
That's.
Production.
Out of those numbers off the top, because of a lot of little pieces, but basically, we're exceeding mask code.
Okay.
So the 44% before you get to the infiltration is because it's a, it's a large site. It has high traffic volume. So we have to get to that before it gets back into the ground.
Yeah, okay.
And as we move through the site, we have different circumstances. So we have, we have areas that are grass. They don't typically need that much TSS, because there's not a lot going on. Sorry, total suspended solids. Then you have parking garages, which have a lot of oils and runoff and cars, so that's where you wanna put your oil-water separator. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, and then I, so you've got it all into the infiltration basin, and on average, you're reducing it by 44% to a level of.
To get.
To get to the infiltration.
To get to the infiltration. After that, it's in excess of 90%.
90%, okay, great, thank you.
Matt, it's, this is more of a, I'm sitting here thinking that the site is functioning right now. The wetland is there.
Poorly.
Yeah, poorly. It's functioning poorly like that. However, the water is making it to that wetland somehow.
Yes.
So whatever leaves here, is what you're doing gonna increase the flow to the wetland? Or be the same as, or less than?
So what, what state code says is you cannot increase your peak discharges. So what we're doing is we're not increasing our P2 discharges. Actually, I would say that most of them are decreased, either marginally or comes on size in the basis. It's hard to mimic everything exactly. So as we go through the process, and we model this, and we're, we're running, we're running, it's called Hydacat. We run it so that we're taking the water from the individual areas based upon the storm event that's happening. We routed through everything, it gets to the basin. We're required to infiltrate back into the ground on a certain amount. We're required to remove total suspended solids. So all these little pieces get tossed into there. And then at the end of the day, we are trying to mimic what's going on right now.
Okay, so I guess a long and short of my question is that water that's coming from the new site will be potentially slightly less than the water is making it there right now. And a whole lot better treatment, treatment process as it goes along through the system.
Yes. Greg, Greg has some great.
I would just say also, as we start to think about that, think about what the plants do for the site, actually. There's so much uptake of water from new planting, which you have none of now, absolutely none of. So it will, it'll be a very significant transition, which is not part of the modeling.
Correct. I can, I can share with the team videos of what's happening right now. And because it's all a gravel or rock surface, all the water, all the total suspended solids are just running right down Beaver Dam and into the wetland. None of that will occur with this program.
I, I just have one, as we're talking here. Will putting, will having less flow into the wetlands be detrimental to the wetlands themselves?
No. It's like I said, we're trying to mimic what's going on there as much as possible. Though Greg's got some great videos, but like, what's going on with all that runoff coming down, eroding everything out, dumping, dumping all that suspended solids back into the well? And that does impact, I, I'm not gonna go into that. But it does impact the wildlife and fish and any of the marine mammals or the marine.
But suffice to say, it's all recharged into the aquifer.
Yes, and it all gets, it all gets back into the aquifer, which does affect the water table, which does impact our wildlife.
Okay, I guess that's also the, what I was asking about. Does, does it, will it dry up? Apparently not, it's all being recharged.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, it's, it's, you're not drying up that well. So it's, again, we're trying to mimic what's going on and make it better.
Thank you.
I think I just say you're trying to mimic the natural water cycle, because what's going on out there is bare soil and a lot of erosion.
So we're trying to mimic the runoff of what's going on up there in our design, so that we're not increasing it or decreasing it. There is some marginal decreases.
You're reducing the rate of runoff to the well. The rate of erosion. The rate of erosion, yeah.
You were, you were there on the site walk. You remember walking down Beaver Dam Road?
Yeah.
And you could see where those big bruggles have formed. All of that dumps into the well. Okay. Item eight, utilities, security, emergency service. So this talks about adequate services provided for wastewater, water, site security, underground utilities required. So the site is served by hydrants. Anything in blue on this screen is water. Anything in green is sewer. Water is being supplied from the bottom of the screen here, as well as sewers. So the water is an eight-inch line that comes up, loops everything. All these blue circles are hydrants. Hydrants have been worked through with the chief. Our fire engineer has gone through extensive modeling to make sure that everything works according to it. Water comes down through here, this is the MAC over here. There's a little wetland here, but when you go down here, you have 128. Underneath 128 is an 18-inch conduit and a 24-inch conduit. They were, to the best of our knowledge, put in place there so that you could get utilities underneath 128 without opening up. Those conduits right now, the 18-inch contains water for the MAC. It contains two, I believe they're five-inch conduits. One of them is empty, and the other one is for communications. The 24-inch is empty. So we are running our force main for sewer through that 24-inch, down the other side to Mill Street. And this has been worked through with DPW. It's part of the utility improvement package that was put out and bid a couple of weeks ago. The sewer force main goes to Mill, goes to Forest, and ties into the sewer system on Forest Street. The water is already on Mill, and we're tying into it. It's already on the site. That comes up, loops around, so. Any questions on water and sewer?
So what's the last thing you just said about the water is already, the last thing you just said, I was writing something.
So, so the water system is on Mill Street. It's an eight-inch system, so on Mill Street, we're tying it as well. It's already on, I'm already on the site, so we're tying into it for that purpose. There's also some water improvement that's going on on Forest Street. That main's going in with 12-inch. And then School Street is also part of this project. There's main improvements going from right about where Essex, the Essex Country Club is, up to almost 128. So that, that's part of this. So that creates a loop with more volume for the site.
Thanks.
So this is gas and electric. This is still being worked through to get everything through the site. But essentially, Atwater Ave is gonna be supplying electric and gas for the project. Gas is gonna come in and has two service connections, one for each building bases. And electric has, it's all underground. For electric, it comes in, it ties into Switchgear, which is this trunk right here, comes into the building. It also comes down underneath the drive as more switchgear and a generator. There's also a generator over there. All right, and then fire services. We did a turning movement analysis for the entire site. We did it for fire, it was also done for tractor-trailers, because they're a little bit bigger. And we will be getting tractor-trailers on the site, so. But essentially, you can see where it comes down to Atwater. We can move throughout the entire site very clearly. There is a turnoff that's pulled in here to allow for the tractor-trailer to, not necessarily back in, but if there's a. but if there's a trailer, if there's no space, then it does have a place to pull up. So it's not in that drive aisle, creating a safety hazard.
Has the fire chief seen this on?
Yes.
Do we have any communication from him, Mark?
No, we don't.
Can we just follow up? And yes. So you've submitted it to them, okay.
Yep, it's, so.
Will you get any comments, written comments from them sooner?
So there's a, it's also a technology security plan. This was based on Trask Lane and Tozer Road. I think I spelled something wrong. So it's, it's something that is in use right now. It's based on their other facilities, so it's, it, you know, it works. It's been submitted as part of this package to the planning board. It's also been submitted to the police department and the fire department.
I have a question back on utilities, sorry.
Sure.
Two questions. What is, are you going to do, are you, three questions. Do you have demand response?
Do I have to do?
Are you doing demand response generate? You?
Not sure yet.
Not sure? Okay, just for the load regionally, it's a good thing. You get paid for it. You get paid for it. Are you going to do solar?
Yep, the, the entire parking garage is going to get covered.
So it's all rooftop?
Yep.
Okay, so no ground mounted?
No ground.
And then the third thing on utilities is the geothermal is again located, it's just wells, but can you just show us on the plan since it is a util, it is here?
So the city's shaded areas, this is where our geothermal fields are going to be. They're not totally flushed out at this point in time. But depending on, so phase one's going to go on with phase one, which I believe is this area. And then phase two is going to be this area. The coordination of that is still ongoing and the actual layout's still ongoing, but.
Are those overlapping with your detention bases?
Yeah, but they're six feet underground. Detention bases, no. So this is, this is a screening burn.
Oh, okay.
So basically this area is getting built up, so there's runoff looking from there. And this area is on this side of the basement.
And I, I know you're, the answer, but just, these are closed loop, that's right?
Yeah.
I have a question on the utility plant. Do you have generators on the site and where in elevation are those located?
Want to talk about them?
Yep, we do have two. Phase one is here and we'll show you a section of how, these are like a school bus. You know, they're not insignificant size wise. We'll show you a section of how we're screening that. Phase two is here and all of this vegetation is going to be under our limit of work. So that's to remain. When we get to the phase two piece, that phase two plant, we will be doing something similar, but heavily planting around that. So that's us there, that's us there.
Excellent, and in terms of the resiliency, are you, the elevation of the generators or not rooftop generators?
They're not rooftop. There's a section that really displays what's going on, but no, they're, they're on the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're actually sinking them in a little bit to try to hide them.
And the switchgear elevation is?
It's.
Is that correct?
Climbed up to this well.
Yeah. It is, it is ground mounted. I see what you're, you guys are getting at, like how we, you know, from a flood elevation.
Resiliency and the flood.
Yeah.
There's, there's no flooding, but.
I think from the way, we haven't worried about that from the elevation standpoint. It has been something that's been driving us to get a lot of volume higher, correct? Yeah.
I guess the larger question is, is there a risk that in that 2090 storm event, that the wetland surface water comes higher? What's that elevation of?
No, it's.
Is there any flooding there? You're also higher.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
What are the elevations?
So, so that well is in the 500 year story of a, I know because I'm modeling. Is, does not come out of the back. And then, so when you go from Atwater here, Atwater here up the hill, you've got about forty to sixty for the elevation.
Which is, I think, part of the reason why we're also not taking on adjacent properties into our storm waters.
It's kind of hard.
We're high, we're just, we're higher than everybody else.
Makes sense, and you're burying all the electrical, so no poles?
No poles.
Okay, yeah.
We have some lights which are on.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
Jump ahead. That's all I got.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, can you go back to the noise for a minute?
Yeah.
Way back when, when you started, because you said that there would be. No one on the other side of 128 will be impacted by a construction with the exception, I assume, of the blasting?
So that's a construction activity. We, do you want to, do you want to touch on that or do you want me to just run with this?
Run with it.
Okay.
Do you want to jump this?
So during construction, we're going to have blasting. It's going to be a couple of months of work that's going on out there. The blasting piece of it is about a minute every day or two. The hammering takes a little bit longer, that's where you're going to hear duh, duh, duh. But we have no neighbors. Our nearest neighbor is. These are residential over here. So you have 128, which comes up about forty feet here, comes across. And then this ridge line popped up even further. So there's a big bucket between, operating between those residential properties and what's going on. The majority of the blasting is on this side of the footpath. So even that portion is getting pushed away noise wise.
And then.
Just sorry, and so all the blasting for both phases will be done. Hours.
So it's a, as well as it's an annoyance, we're trying to get it done all at once. It's also safer to get all the blasting taken care of while there's no buildings in the vicinity.
Okay, and then the other thing that was on your first slide was the hours of, of construction.
Yep.
So that is in the general bylaws, section forty-five.
I understand.
And it details specific activities that have to occur eight a.m. And you have to go, not a special permit or anything, just to the board of segment, select board for, for any modification of those hours. You have to come to us.
I, I, I think that it's, the hours are set forth in your performance standards. And I believe that it also specifically states that you have the right to waive those, any, any portion of those. So we will be making a request at the appropriate time to allow for construction activity to start six thirty in the morning as opposed to eight. And the primary reason for that is to get all the trucks on site before school buses and school traffic.
I think the issue is that the operation of heavy equipment, I think that, I'm not worried about that. pavement breakers, pile drivers, and blasting. Doesn't say unlasting, but I think you can affirm blasting eight to six. So I think it's the pile drivers. And I know this was a direct response to the year-long pile driving at six a.m. Everybody could hear all over town about a particular project.
What are?
So I think that's the, that's the one that's going to be a little bit harder. I think it'd be very, you just need to be specific exactly about what you want.
Yeah, we can, we can come up with very specific activities going on. But our thought was that we can get in there, because you guys are very concerned with Essex coming.
Yeah.
All the school kids coming through. But if we can get in there before they're there, we don't impact their travel schedule. They can get going. We can come up with an activity schedule based upon, you know, what's going to happen at what time and make everybody.
Yeah, I think we can probably foresee that pile driving at six a.m. is going to be a problem.
I don't, I don't see that being happening, but I understand where you're coming from.
Two things, the hours were first thought of as traffic mitigation.
Right, and that makes sense.
And then in discussing the MAC, I've had a number of meetings with them and their programming. And where blasting would work well in their programming. We're looking at trying to, to set off a blast made above nine o'clock in the morning. In order to facilitate that, we would have to start earlier than eight to make it safe. So that's one of the reasons we're looking at a six thirty start. And I will check with the, the last tenant because his noise activity was doing crushing in same operations that we would be acting performing to see what his, his level of, of noise was. I, I don't think it's going to be a lot different. But Matt is correct. It's, the blasting really is not a, a noise impact as much as a percussion impact. It's really the drilling that is going to be continuous for a, a, a number of months. And so we, we can play that one by ear too. But it's more of a safety consideration, traffic consideration more than.
Okay, I think it would just be specific about what you need. But I think it's that percussive noise of six and one that.
We've all heard.
Yeah, but I think it's also a great idea to be off getting your folks not to interfere with the school traffic. So that's great. Okay.
I'm done with my presentation. Anybody have questions on this?
Sue or Chris, any questions? Wes, Wes and Sam say, comments on this part?
Up to you how we present. We were going to present our comments and go, put it, it's open on different topics. We can go sequentially and.
Well, then why don't you just do it at the end then?
Sure.
Okay, that sounds fine, great.
So I believe Josh is online.
Hi, everybody, can you, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't be there. And, but I'm happy to, happy to be here virtually and present. Essentially the ecological assessment that we Biohabitat did for cell signaling technology and for the project in the site. And really to, to really help, help the, the team understand the site as it is right now ecologically and where it could be. You know, Biohabitat, so for myself, I'm a senior ecologist, restoration ecologist with Biohabitat. About twenty-five years of experience doing everything, wetland nominations, permitting, both federal and state Massachusetts. So in Biohabitat, we're an ecological planning firm. And really our mission, we're driven to restore the earth and to inspire ecological stewardship. So really, when we were brought on board, next slide please. We were brought on board really was to help the team bring an ecological planning aspect to the overall planning and design process. So I'm not going to read every word on this, but basically looking at the landscape context of the site, what's going on ecologically, the networks, natural resources. Really establish the planning foundations to, to ensure that ecological systems are not degraded, but are, in fact, are actually, are actually improved and really increasing ecological functions and ecological services. And really, again, it's not a means to an end, but it's a foundation. We're really looking at trying to pull together all the information that goes into the biophysical aspects of, of a site and, and bring it, bring it to bear on the landscape design and as well as all the other aspects of the project, stormwater, et cetera. Next slide please. So just, a lot of this information was in our report. You're probably familiar with it, so I'm going to kind of go through it relatively quickly. But obviously if you have questions, stop me. But this all should be relatively familiar. So really, this site, which is in the lower right quadrant of this, this figure, image, is within the Gulf Main coastal lowland. It's a biophysical region of Maine and Massachusetts that extends along the Atlantic coast. It is part of the greater eastern broadleaf forest province and lower New England ecoregion section. So these things you probably are, are familiar with in the region. Obviously, we know with the heat, it gets hot in the summer and cold in the winters. And the topography of this site, which actually shows up on our next slide, is pretty, is pretty variable. So we're located in the coastal plain physiognography, a lot of glacial activity. And that glacial activity was also affected by the existing bedrock. Hence the, the mining services and the quarry services that have, activities that have happened on this site. And so really the thin glacial till, but really a lot of bedrock on the site. And then glacial till in the uplands, in the lowlands where the valleys are really a lot of outwashed deposits. So you have, you have some, some really nice wetland areas, like those associated with Saw Mill Brook. Next slide please. Then we, with regard to the watershed, we're in the north coastal subbasin. And really the Cape and Chubb Point Castle Neck watershed, it really drains, the site drains to Saw Mill Brook, which then joins with Cat Brook to form Little Pine Island Creek. And then ultimately discharging into the Massachusetts Bay, northern part of Massachusetts Bay. And then as, as Matt mentioned before, Saw Mill Brook is classified as a cold water fishery habitat. It actually contains native bird trap in it. And that's one of the reasons why it's important that it's the, the temperature be regulated and protected. The site is also along the Atlantic flyway, flyway. So a lot of bird migration occurring over and through the site. Several dozen migratory birds use this flyway, including songbird, songbirds, shorebirds, ducks and raptors. So you really have a, you know, a great opportunity for not only, not only species to nest and use the sites, site in the adjacent area, surrounding area, but also to pass through during the fall and the spring. So a lot of opportunities, and I think that's recognized. And you'll see later as I get through the actual habitat, which is here. So our, our land, next slide please. So that's the land cover and land use on the site. You can see that the site is, everything north is just north of Route 128. And it's, everything is largely for it except for the site. And that forested area is really continuous tracks of forested upland with forested and non-forested freshwater wetlands. So, so really a lot of continuous, continuous forest land through this area. And it's further refined when we looked at what Matt showed on the next, which is shown on the next slide, of the map protected and ecological habitats. So again, Saw Mill Brook is the only map protected ecological habitat on site. It runs, and which is basically on the edge of the western edge of the site. But there are, you know, nearby protected ecological habitats for endangered species and certified burnout pools, but again, not on, not on site. And in fact, the really nearby important ecological habitats are further to the north, where you have a significant amount of core forest and, meaning that it's unfragmented, which provides, which provide the improved habitats to, to certain songbirds that, that don't like fragmented woodland. And then also, I see there's also some critical burnout pool upland, which basically is areas where burnout pool connectivity. And that's, you can see that up in the north, sort of north and east of, of the site. Next slide please. And again, I think this is, this is all, it recognized in the region by just the extensive protected open space and conservation land, how important it is to protect these continuous forests and, and minimize the amount of fragmentation in them. And so there is ownership within a mile of the site. There's ownership by fourteen separate entities. And it's a significant amount of, of open space that helps conserve continuous tracks of, of wildlife habitat for, for migration and diversity. And next slide please. I think the site topography itself helps, helps understand some of the ecology of the site. So the topography is basically broken into two parts. The western two-thirds are sort of developed and managed portions, while the eastern third is more native and naturalized. The eastern noil, noil actually adjoins and extends what's currently associated with protected habitat or open, protected open space to the, to the east and to the north. And actually, it's, it's, it's very similar in terms of, in terms of its general habitat and vegetation assemblages and, and diversity. So the next slide here is, want to just talk about the assessed communities and the, the eco types that we, we went through. We looked at developed and managed areas, upland areas and wetlands. So I'll just jump right into some of the, the developed and managed is what it is. I mean, Matt talked a lot about that. I think you're familiar, all familiar with that. So I'm not going to spend any time other than that. It's really not a lot of habitat available in those areas. Really, the habitat, the habitat comes when we looked at some of the areas that have remained, remained foul, fallow, fallow, and, and also, you know, generally had light management activity on it. So the first is a, a disturbed dry meadow community. These are areas that are most recently been disturbed and allowed to just revegetate. It's a mix of red dura weeds, native dry meadow species, which are common at disturbed sites. Ragweed, tan z, goldenrod, barnyard brass, bean lace. We also see, start to see some invasives coming in like mudworm in that area. Adjacent to these disturbed meadows, next slide please, are some of the distorted wet meadows. These are very simple. These are very similar to the dry meadows. Um, the difference, they're not wetlands, but they are, there is more of a saturated condition, longer duration of, um, water sitting on them. So the wetter conditions at this location, they, they're predominantly from surface drainage. Uh, and lead to a similar, but a little bit more diverse assemblage of herbaceous species and mixed shrubs starting to come in. Uh, a lot of those species are like, um, are, are actually become, uh, some of the non-natives, uh, invasive ones such as conch reed or fragmites, purple looshite, Japanese knotweed. Um, we see, start to see tree of heaven and multiflora anasiatic, which we oriental bitter sweet starting to come in. Um, as, as mowing is really decreased and these woody species are allowed to, to flourish a little more. Next slide please. And then the third sort of area that we see in this, in these early disturbed areas, early succession or scrub shrub species. Um, these actually we, we observed have a lot more of the native species, um, coming in. But this, they're generally younger individuals of that early succession series, uh, species that we would see, um, you know, such as, uh, gray birch or quaking aspen. But you start to see some, some of the more long-term second layer of species or second succession of species, which is, and with some of the oaks and such. Uh, next slide, please. Which then kind of is derived from the adjacent area to the, to the east and north, or the east of the spot, eastern side of the site. Um, and that's really the forest community of a hemlock, beech, mixed oak forest complex. And this is an extension of, again, the areas off-site to the northeast. Um, it's, it's an eco tone that's basically, on this particular site, um, is adjacent. It's, uh, it consists largely of red oak, black oak, scarlet oak, um, as well as hemlock and beeches. Um, unfortunately, uh, like a lot of areas, our forests are sort of impacted, um, by several diseases or, or parasites. Um, hemlocks, as you know, at the woolly deluge, and that's been dealing with that for some time. Uh, and the, and the beeches, um, longer term, we've seen beech bark disease. But in the shorter term, we're starting to see beech leaf disease taking toll on a lot of beech trees. So, um, while the hemlocks and the beeches are able to provide a lot of shade on the interior forest canopy, there is some, some loss of that, of those species, um, gradually because of these parasites. So, um, what happens is those interior forests are gonna see a transition, um, not just be, not in this site specifically, but across New England and actually the whole, the northeast in general, where you'll see a lot more light penetration, a lot more stuff coming. And, uh, other species starting to come through. But as of right now, these are the species that, that are there. Um, so understory species that we will see come through are things like low bush blueberry or witch hazel. Um, we also see smaller species such as tea barrier sunflower, cannon mayflower, and, and ghost spike throughout the, this area. Uh, within that hemlock, beech, mixed oak forest complex, next slide please. Um, it's sort of a subset to the area, which is a, which is an open hardwood woodland. Uh, this is an area within the forest complex that's more open savanna-like, I'd see we'd say at the summit of a hillside. Um, and the community, and community is similar to canopy with the oaks and hemlock. Uh, you do start to see some pines in there. But the understory is a lot more densely populated with, um, with smaller trees like hot hornbeam, or you might see things like huckleberry, vibranium, et cetera. Um, all these types of things, um, provide, uh, different types of varying habitat for, for species. Again, more interior type of, of forest habitats similar to what's, what's off-site. And then next, uh, slide, please. Um, the mixed forest pockets and, and highway edge is another eco type that we were, we observe. And this is really the stuff that's on the edges, um, things that had been disturbed long ago, maybe when the whole site was cleared. Um, haven't had a chance to regenerate, uh, they're along the, they're along the highway. So there's, there's some, um, salt spray and, and, and other activity that's, that's happening. That's basically affecting the, uh, the growth in those areas. But these are, um, again, uh, beech, hemlock, oak, but also you start to see these are more red maple, um, with a more moderately dense understory, uh, of red maple, huckleberry, witch hazel, et cetera. Uh, but you do also, because of the amount of disturbance and the amount of, um, edge that's there, you start to see more of, uh, more invasives such as, um, oriental bitter sweet or glossy buckthorn or honeysuckle bush. And then our last area, um, covered, I sort of grouped all these together, but it's for the wetland areas. And these are really on the periphery, I mean, two, the, two larger ones are on the periphery. So you have Sawmill Brook on the, on the west, uh, which we talked about before. And then, uh, which really receives a lot of, uh, receives its, its cold water, um, fishery designation because there is, um, a lot of forest around it, um, a lot of wetlands that are able to detain the water and cool it, but also groundwater discharge that gets into the stream and supports those cold water fisheries. Um, and then on the eastern side of the property is, you know, is a wetland that was flagged, but extends further off to the, um, to the east, to the east. And that, and both of these sort of are largely a red maple assemblage of, uh, forest with some sweet pepper, sweet pepper bush, high bush blueberry, um, uh, sweet birch underneath cinnamon fern. So that type of, that type of, of community in there. Um, and really, the, so as we talked about in these assessed communities, next slide please. Um, we, we're really use these communities as the inspiration for the, the planned landscape design. Um, we wanna draw strongly from the native species and the communities that are, that are, um, on the site, but really that are adjacent to the site as well, uh, pulling from, pulling from that eastern third of the site. We really wanna understand, you know, what's, what habitats are available, what species are there, and really, how can we connect the ecology, um, of the surrounding site to the human needs and the uses on the site? Um, and really try to find the balance between the two. Uh, this connection, connection is intended to increase genetic diversity, um, of both wildlife species as well as vegetation species. Uh, we can really only control the vegetation species, uh, and what we plant, but, um, those veget, those species that we bring in, then encourage certain wildlife to use it, uh, given the type of, the type of structure and the type of, um, the type of mass or fruits that those types of species produce. Um, wildlife noted on site include, really include typical suburban and assimilated mammal species, like with whitetail deer, um, to a certain extent coyote and bobcat, which are becoming a lot more common. Um, and, um, derring has, has these days, as their populations grow. And then raccoons and squirrels, um, you know, throughout the site, possum, et cetera. So I really, a lot of the species that we see there. Avian species that we're seeing, uh, are also generally forest edge species, um, like American crow, robin or black cat chickadee. You might see some, some more slightly interior species like the wood thrush, uh, on the site. Um, and then obviously coastal species, if you go off to the site and backside, you see a lot of, a lot of gulls, um, that are in the area, which are obviously, because we're close to the ocean, there's gonna be quite a few heret gulls and blackback gulls. So really, um, again, the idea that, you know, we wanted to work with, with cell signaling technology in the team is to, is to really bring to bear this, the ecological quality, um, of the area that surrounds the site and really draw that, that, um, ecological diversity, uh, to the site and provide some ecological uplift, um, by, by establishing, uh, native and natural communities on site um, that can support the wildlife that, that is around the site and in those core habitats. Done. That's the gist of, I wanted, what I wanted to share with you all. Um, I'm truly happy to answer any questions, that might have been a little quick, but, uh, hopefully that, that helps you understand where, where maybe what Lynn was gonna, is gonna talk about, and where she, where she goes. Thank you.
I, I, it was a great presentation, Josh. Um, thank you. I'm really excited that, you know, the team is taking this ecological diversity approach to the site. So I think it's, uh, really an incredible opportunity and I'm, I'm very excited about this approach. But I have a few questions, um, just to dig in a little more. Are there some key species that you're managing for that might be more interior and less edge species? Um, and are you trying to create corridors for them? Or what you're thinking on, how do you kind of measure success here? And how do you, uh, plan corridors or path to throw, whatever the, whatever the approach might be?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that, um, trying to minimize the amount of, first of all, minimize any, uh, fragmentation on the edges. Um, and really getting some of those interior species. And when we think of interior species, a lot of times we're talking about, about birds, um, as, as our interior species. Um, so, you know, like I said, wood thrush, even hermit thrushes can, can thrive in these areas. Um, uh, and basically, I don't think that we can, we can expect to have, um, we can expect to have the, the species, interior species thrive in this, on the site because it's not going to be an interior habitat. Uh, but I think being able to, uh, provide, provide the, the migration and movement pathways through the site uh, without having to cross through open fields and such, um, you know, I think that that's for more of a, a maniac species. Um, I think that's probably gonna be critical. So I think that part of the design approach, uh, working with, with, um, with Lynn is just to, to make sure that we provide enough density of vegetation, um, enough natural vegetation that, that, that those, those pathways are, exist and might, you know, they can migrate through it.
Creating corridors for species.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Um, thank you. A couple, a few more questions. Um, in terms of the management over time, and I know you're talking about, you know, first day design today, but you've got a different, several different landscape type, typologies. Some of them are successional, and you have knotweed and other pretty nasty invasives. So is there a thought about managing, you know, mowing, uh, inputs to these various kinds of landscapes? Is there an O and M plan being created?
It will be in the process. We've been talking to cell signal, we don't have it yet.
Yeah.
And it's absolutely a big part of it. I mean, the, the invasions that are out there are no joke. I think to our benefit, we will be, and you'll see, I mean, much of it is open now, but we will be clearing a lot and then, you know, replanting, so.
Right.
We'll have to.
Yes, some of the invasions by excavation probably.
Right, and some of the soil deaths too, then we start to look at the soil, um, plan will kind of help with some of that because in some places it's.
Yeah, that was my next question, when you're anticipating it. So talk a little more about how the soils plan maps to these kind of different landscape typologies.
Do you want me to go? Right, because it's part of the, our presentation, I'm happy to get it.
Yeah, let me, um, just see if there's anything else for Josh before I get into that. Um, so before, I think last two for Josh. One is related to the thermal, um, stormwater pollution management. And, you know, do you have a point of view, Josh, on the kind of, um, uh, landscape-based treatments and their contribution to, to reduction of thermal pollution? Because you said this is a cold water species, um, resource.
Yeah, I think, I think that this was spoken earlier too. Um, and I think that, you know, whatever is going, is being proposed is, is going to be better than what's there now. Um, a vegetated, um, a vegetated system, especially with natural native, uh, vegetation, that are really going to increase evapotranspiration, um, so water uptake. Um, the soils will also, uh, will also hold more of that, that water and allow it to infiltrate, as well as the, the detention basins and retention, infiltration basins that are there. So I think all those in, together, combined, um, will be a vast improvement on, on the water quality in terms of, in terms of temperature and therefore the protection of, of salt creek and the cold water.
Great. And my last question for Josh, I know we're not talking about site lighting tonight, but I wonder if Josh will be taking a look at the plan and thinking about any kind of wildlife impacts? Or if there, if you say dark sky and that's enough, or can you just speak to the impacts of site lighting on wildlife habitats?
I mean, I haven't, I haven't, um, looked at the, the site lighting. Um, I think that, um, so I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
We can talk about that one, right, in the lighting presentation also. But just to that point, I think what we're trying to do is balance the programmatic needs, right? Of the site, if everything is LEED compliance and where is the dark sky? And so, um, you know, if it's, it's, if we had more space, we'd say, here's the corridor that's not lit. But I think because the ring road is really the definition, so I think it's, it's that balance. I think we're trying to hit the, the lighting is being worked on in a very, um, kind of rigorous and delicate way so that it's just enough for safety of, you know, human beings out there. But it will be lights, you know, so it might impact that. But I think when we start to, we can pull up the plan, when we look at our edges where we're really buffering things like heavily, we do have a lot of space where we're, it's not programmed. And so, you know, we technically support some of this kind of improvement and habitat. The beautiful thing about the site is that we're do, what we're doing is gonna be an improvement no matter what, which is, which is great, but we do want to do it in the most thoughtful way.
Right.
Um, do you want me to just, please, we'll, some other questions for Josh?
Anybody else have questions for Josh?
He'll stay on, so I'm sure that he's over that as soon as he can. Um, so I think folks have seen the plan. We can talk a bit about, you know, there's a lot of different programmed elements that we have in the exterior for the landscape pieces. And, um, I'm gonna go through some of the specific comments that we had from the Western Sampson team that do relate to landscape, but it's always folded back to the way we've been working with Josh and the rest of the team. So you'll see certain, um, uh, labels here with berm screening, meadow. Some of this is the way we've designed the site to work programmatically based on what we're seeing that we are currently supporting. So just for example, we're not trying to do, you know, big trees in a meadow location where we know existing soils are very thin. Our soils plan is extensive and expensive. That's one thing. We know that we have to do a lot of that here, but we're just trying to be very wise about how we go through that process and listen to the site and have it tell us already what's doing well there. And then how we can come in and kind of beef that up. Um, I'll go forward, but we can always come back to many of these elements. We did just wanna put in this plan, I think, uh, I wonder what we'd submitted, this is supplemental material, but what is it gonna look like during phase one? So just as a reminder to everybody, this is the intended phase one plan. Um, as Greg was talking about earlier, all of the blasting for phase two will occur at this time. And then we've kind of worked very hard to say, what is this gonna look like, you know, for this amount of time? We want to be judicious about not planting a lot of things here that we know we're going to have to rip out. So the idea of this meadow, this is part of our grassland habitat, you'll see a diagram that shows that a bit. Um, that happens here in a really kind of beautiful passive way. But this, from the lobby and all this will be very open again. This is the thinner area of existing disturbed meadow, thinner soils. We're at, um, terracing the actual hillside. So we're gonna try to get some planting in some of the flat areas of the terraces because we know it'll be there for a little bit. And then, um, more vegetation down at the bottom. So we're kind of surgically working through what can we do here for phase two and minimize the amount of disturbance then that we'll have to do when we, when we actually construct that. But what's beautiful about this one area is that at the, at the top of the, um, quarry wall here, all of this existing vegetation, we do not have to touch. And that's really, we're really looking for chances where there is quality vegetation on the site that has a broader scale to it that we don't have to touch. And this is one of those kind of key moments, this is as well, you'll see other drawings, those are the big ones. And, uh, so that's really important to us as we're going through. So one of the questions that we had in section four point six was the preservation of existing vegetation. This diagram was submitted. But just to step us through, um, what we see here in the magenta, these are areas where we've located that the vegetation can remain. This is that big swath I was just talking about in this piece. There's actually like a little chunk, don't touch the screen, at the face of the quarry piece there. We're really trying to keep as much as we can. Um, it's fairly low, it's not big trees. We wanna make sure that this view is maintained, but if we can keep that, it actually provides a nice buffer to portions of the edge. It's not consistent, some of these things are, you know, not, uh, high-quality vegetation as, as we've discussed. But in the lighter tan, there are some square footages of trees that we will have to remove to, in order to construct the project. And then in the darker brown, there's, um, brush understory. So it's already disturbed, we're not removing a lot of additional material. What we are doing is proposing a very significant amount of this. And we're just highlighting in the light green the trees that we're putting on the site in addition. And then everything else is gonna be green on the ground plane. So we're excited about the transformation that that will provide. Um, tree protection, this was one of the questions, I just wanted, we, we did submit the responses, but just so everybody here knows that the tree protection fencing will be, this is our standard specification, six-foot high chain link fencing at the drip line of the trees. trees, um, so that nobody can get in there and like hang out in the shade and park in the shade and all of that, so we're very serious, we know there's not a lot of trees that we can keep on site, so we want to make sure that we're doing all the right things during construction period, and Columbia is wonderful about that, and then if there are particular things that need to be done to the existing trees, that it will be done by certified arborist. So that's part of our specifications that will be adopted in the construction documents. You have wonderful requirements about soil, your, your biolabs, so that's really fascinating to me in particular, but what we start to see is that we've identified the locations based on the diagram that you'll see forthcoming of the typologies. I think the big thing that, the big one here that I just wanted to talk about is this proponent like the, like the east thirty, this is a very disturbed portion of the site that is not part of phase one or phase two construction, but we know we need to do something to it. Um, I think we're getting out there and doing some regrading and things now, in order to, the soil depth out here is extensive that we would have to provide in order to do a six-inch soil depth, if we do four, we're pretty confident we can get a seed mix to grow on four and at least stabilize this as part of the project. So that's the one thing where we're kind of saying, in your specifications it says, you know, we need six inches minimum, this is one location we're saying we can just do four, that would be beneficial because it is a huge amount of area, and we are, you know, able to hit it, I think, with a pretty extensive erosion control, dry seed mix that will, and then let them duke it out, kind of thing, over time, so that it will stabilize that area and reduce our erosion.
So that's the natural, the upland grassland that you're trying to grow in the thin soil, or what's the community there?
Well, this is, I mean, our focus for design is really here.
Sure.
This is one of those like, oh god, we have to do that too, kind of thing that's out there, and so this would just be, um, a part of that, you know, let's get some soil in there and just hit that with a seed mix and let it.
Just a hydro theme?
Yeah, like, we'll, we'll go through, it's probably gonna be one of those, you know.
Meadow mixes or something.
Meadow mixes, that's good for, you know, erosion control, quick germination and, um, you know, duration over time, so it'll be a mix, it'll actually be probably from a pollinator standpoint, this is a big open field, really cool, um, but this is something that is just not part from the designs portion of, of this part of the project, but we know that we need to address it. So that's the reasoning for proposing four inches of soil in that location as opposed to six. But yes, in, in the permanent established areas in close proximity to the building, um, minimum of six inches of soil even for the like grassland habitats that we're talking about. Irrigation did come up, we are proposing irrigation on the project for establishment, that's a big piece, we're investing a ton of money in the new plant material, and we need it to be successful for all of us, you know, for the whole project to be successful. So as part of it, and I think you will see that we're choosing the right native plant material to survive here, but getting it established is, is very critical. And so we do have, uh, as, as was mentioned earlier, um, a rainwater harvesting system, Greg and I were going back and forth, I said twenty-five thousand, I thought it was twenty-five thousand, he thinks it's twenty thousand, somewhere in there, we've sized the tank appropriately to meet LEED requirements and the areas that we need to irrigate. It will also be collecting roof runoff, condensate, and, um, reverse arsmosis water, so, which they do currently.
Yep.
At, um, at their facilities. So we have a great amount of resources for that tank, which is.
Is that enough to meet the demand, not that you wanna use potable water, but in a drought, is there?
Yeah, we're trying to size and saying, okay, in a drought, we're gonna irrigate the prime areas, which is like where they, where they would have most, um, activity, you know, it's like the, the kind of front, you know, this, no, this is just gonna have to deal on the very edges. So we've gone back and forth, it's, it's, we're looking to size it appropriately, have it meet the cost, and then, you know, kind of work with the, the primary areas that we're looking to irrigate also, which you can see, um, as we get to some of the other ones, but I think the areas on the edges, we're gonna get them up and running and then say, you know.
Do you establish, do you provide irrigation for those over the establishment period as well, the buffering?
Yeah, things will, yes, exactly. And so the establishment.
Water, water tanks or?
In the establishment period, it might be a draw a little bit.
Yeah.
So I think that's what we're trying to go back and forth and figure out the right way, but it is, yeah, for this is probably.
You don't just put them in the ground and walk away from them?
You can, exactly, correct. So, but the goal is that irrigation will not be from the municipal water, um, and that it is in compliance with the LEED certification from the public health project. So now I'm gonna jump into seeing how, um, Josh and, and our work had really dovetailed. So just in zooming in here, and reiterating some of the landscape typologies that he identified, just notice disturbed, disturbed, like early succession, everything out there, as you know, is heavily disturbed, so, um, these areas in the kind of higher part at the, the top of the quarry, very thin soils, that's what we're seeing there, they're disturbed, we have dry meadows coming in, we have a little bit of wet meadow coming in, but it's just telling us that that soil depth right now can't support other things, at least not quite yet. Um, the early successional areas that we were talking about, some of these pieces, um, saying maybe it's a little less disturbed, other elements are coming in, but what we're really focusing, our primary pole for the actual landscape, the planting palette, is from these bigger, more established areas. Sadly, not using hemlock or beech, um, at all, this is just unfortunate, but not the most, um, appropriate thing to do here. So Salma book is really kind of off of the property, but as Matt mentioned, we do have, um, detention areas and, uh, rain gardens that we're gonna be pulling some of that kind of plant typologies from. So here's how we've organized the site with a lot of different, um, typologies that we've said, these are the things that are really gonna drive how we're gonna plant and make the decisions about planting there. I just, in number one, I think this, these areas are the ones that are mostly pulled from here with more diversity. The screening priorities are key, and you'll, we'll have diagrams about this, but this berm, super key, these areas, this is where the generator is, that's very key for larger plant material from day one, and then this area down here. So this is where we're spending a lot of the money early on, whereas, you know, some of these areas with the backside of the garage, we can put in woodland restoration, we can put in five-foot evergreens, you know, and have them, it's a steep slope, and just say the smaller they are in those particular conditions, the better they will actually adapt over time. So identifying some of the primary goals and a few other places is really helping us with our planting over quite an extensive site. I do wanna highlight number seven, we're, we'll, over time, we'll figure out how big that really wants to be, but we do have the idea of doing a little nursery out here, we could plant smaller things that then could get transplanted for phase two, so, and even have it like a, a test thing, it's, it's a bunch of scientists in the building, so they're really good, which is cool. Um, and number eight, we also know that there's, uh, it's, it's doing the grassland habitat, but they also have a program of, um, raised garden beds and stuff, so for them, for the, for the folks there, that's a wonderful amenity. We only have, number twelve, tiny little pieces of lawn, but this is like a microclover lawn, programmatically, this is a really nice spot for folks from the building to come out, that's like the one open green space around with a walking loop. And then in the basins, we know at number nine, um, it has to be all perennials vegetation, so they can kind of mow it, get in there and mow periodically, but then in number ten, we have more opportunities to do bigger rain garden kind of moves, so, um, you do have the plant list, it's.
Look it over, it's extensive.
It's a big palette, and you know, when we start to get into CDs, we'll say, we're gonna pull from these things, but the team collectively so far has worked on what is the right palette, it's actually been, for a landscape architect, it's been super fun to go back and forth with Josh, and Josh is like, how about this, and I'm like, okay, great, how about this, and some of them, um, are great, we'll be working with the contractor because some native things are less commercially available, so that's another thing, but there are commercial nurseries out there that will supply some of these street species that will do well in these conditions, so, um, planting-wise, it's gonna be super fascinating, I think, for all of us to kind of watch the process as we go. This gives you just a sense, this is what we shared, Liz, DST, driving a lot of our ideas, what we're, what we're talking about when we say naturalized berm, something that's more heavily planted, successional woodland, you get low kind of perennials, some scrub, and then you get into larger trees, um, some of these elements that are just bigger, looser grasses, wet meadow, lots of pollinators, so this is, if we can bring the pollinators in, and the birds, you know, and some of these other places, that would be really amazing, and I think everyone would be very happy about, but this just gives a sense of what those typologies mean when we're talking about them. And then the areas that I mentioned previously, I think the last hearing, people were saying, well, how big are things gonna be when they go in, and I said, we're gonna spend our money in certain places, and these two images highlight where the big trees will be going in, so this is on the north side, and then this next one, this is just screening from one twenty-eight. So to give a sense, and people are like, well, how big is that really? This is the range for many of these evergreens that we're talking about, not across the whole site, but in these particular locations, we're looking at spec in, you know, twelve to fourteen, sixteen, up to twenty-two, twenty-four feet, so that's why this is where the money is going.
And does that overlap with the irrigation of those areas too? Because aren't they the screening area where eventually you're gonna, after establishment, you're gonna let that?
After establishment, hopefully though, yeah.
And so with the size of the trees on day one, you might need more than a year potentially for establishment?
Usually we say two years for establishment, and LEED will support that.
Okay.
Because it's just sometimes, you know, it depends on when things go in, but two years is typically established.
Yes, these are big trees to expect to.
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah.
Come out of the nest on year one.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So we have pretty pictures of what we're looking at, but this is all taken from the diversity of the trees that we're looking at in this, like, number one, where we're really pulling from the, you know, existing more mature forests, trying to support that throughout the, the project, and I think from a habitat side, we're really excited to see what this can do. Um, all of these will be great fit for this location, um, lots of year-round interest, so we're highlighting the evergreens here just because of the screening sensibilities, but flowering trees, great spring, great fall color, great habitat, things that, you know, usually, um, you get in your berries on your shrubs and stuff, which is also part of the whole scene, but, um, lots of different texture, lots of interest is what we're really going through for, throughout the entire site. I think that the fall color really being something that'll be amazing from one twenty-eight that really pops. This last one, we know this is not native, sometimes, sometimes you just gotta go with a big honking green giant to get you to have that fast screening, um, from a, you know, also from a cost perspective.
Is that on the berm or around the generators on the berm? So it's gonna backdrop to the stuff happening in front?
Exactly, so it's, it's gonna be like, they're up on this berm.
Yeah.
In the round, so this is the generator, this is where we burned, we burned up here too.
Okay.
Um, we have a section coming through, but this was about fencing, so one of the questions was about fencing, so we have only two types of fences on the project, one being a fence on top of a retaining wall here as a utility piece, um, to screen that, and we'll do the section, so we're like, really, really, it's gonna be, it's really gonna be that big? And so this is, it gets to your questions too about the elevation, so we're setting this, doing a retaining wall around it, and this is an eight-foot-high fence that's on top of the retain wall, and then the berm happens, and this gets really heavily planted. Then you come down, this is our ring road, and this is where we're burning up, the other side of Brady is over there. Uh, we have to do a lot of these studies, I think, um, President Michael Combe is really, he does not want to see any of these things, which, you know, is kind of driving the, the, a lot of the design decisions to really kind of gang up the plant material here, which is helpful for us from a design perspective, but the pedestrian experience is gonna be lovely throughout the whole site, but this is where the generator is behind, this is the garage, the generator is back in there. So this is the type of fencing that we're thinking about to actually, it's not a full, um, hundred percent opacity, but an eighty percent that would be on top of that retaining wall to help screen some of these large generators, so really, this coupled with the berming, coupled with the plant material is gonna do the job. The other area that we have fencing is the guardrail, um, which is the same material that we're intending to do from the, the architectural side of it, so it's a forty-two-inch-high guard that, if you look at the grading here, uh, the grade starts to drop down, and we're putting that fencing lower, planting around it, so you're, it doesn't inhibit the use, that's the intention, so it's a little like a, like a ha-ha kind of thing, where you don't see that, but it's, it's gonna be the same material as we have, um, all the guardrails on the, on the building, so it really feels very seamless. And then, uh, I think there was a question about the generator for phase two, which I mentioned earlier, but this is the proposed location for it, um, all of this vegetation is being under a limit of work, so that would stay, and so we would kind of come back in and kind of beef this up more. You start to see a, a little bit of the grades that show the edge of this berm here, so this is knocked down from the building, but we do, we will be looking at it screening more closely from this side of things.
Quick question on the generator in terms of the noise, I don't know how they're being exercised monthly, but is there any, um, noise impact for neighbors or?
Well, we currently exercise our generators weekly.
Weekly.
For fifteen minutes.
Uh-huh.
They're serviced on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
I mean, they make noise, but, you know, you, you can, you can abate some of that noise with, um, you know, some attenuation equipment and stuff that can be put on the exhaust.
Yeah.
Uh, to minimize that, but it will make a little bit of noise for sure.
Yeah, but you've cited them in ways that they're not creating a concern that way. Okay, thanks.
That's what I have, that's, yeah, so open for questions.
You, but I don't need to monopolize, so I can wait.
It's all yours.
Great presentation, Lynn, I'm, I'm really excited about the diversity, the planting palette and the, um, you know, the working with the wildlife biologist, um, a few questions, you didn't talk on this, um, presentation about the accessible pedestrian route through the campus, can you just describe that?
Yeah, I can absolutely do that, uh, so the, everything has a sidewalk, and the material changes, we tried to also, in certain locations, it's asphalt, then we go to concrete where it's a little bit closer to the front of the, of the building. This is where the handicap parking is, and for the visitors, at the front entry, so this is all accessible, universally accessible coming up, we worked, um, very closely to get those grades to work, we do have a little, uh, boardwalk with stairs walkway up there, I think that's kind of TBD, um, but, so this is, you know, where accessible parking happens, and then you come out here at the upper quad, this is also a tiered condition, but it's also, it's a five percent walkway, so we have an upper piece and a lower piece, so all of this is universally accessible.
And so the first walk, not the boardwalk, which is sort of a, another option if you choose to go that way, but the, the main entry is the accessible one there?
Yes, yeah. Accessible route to the garage too, the idea is that most people, if they park in the garage, will go through the connector to the building, but you can, we, we've worked that out over that bridge, um, then the site gets steeper, so this stuff is not universally accessible, just because it's what we have to accommodate, but down at this lower level, you can come out, and this is, uh, the, the pathway through here, and I think all the way up through these walkways are universally accessible, but then here, that this kind of the, gets a little bit steeper, so coming out, this whole piece is accessible, this whole piece is accessible, I think even over to here, um, and then just from the pedestrian standpoint, we have a sidewalk that runs around the whole thing, I think what we really like down here is peeling that sidewalk, that pedestrian access away from the roadway, so it's just a nicer experience, you're really moving through, you're moving through like a woodland nearly down here, um, we worked this berm condition here, so it, it hides the quarry garden from the roadway. Lots of spill out, we imagine, from, from the building, actually out here, and that this is a, a spot where you could actually, you know, a lot of events and other things, but, um. But for folks that want to get out and do their laps at lunch, you know, it's, I think we calculated before, I'm not gonna quite remember it, maybe a quarter mile?
Yeah, I knew you were gonna go.
I know. Get back to you on that. But we did, we did calculate, so you could, so you could get out there and be like, yeah, how many, what is it for a lap? But even down here, we did connect, this is a 5% walkway that brings you down to move between the rain garden and the stormwater detention basin, which we thought was also, again, it's that like getting out and doing a lap in the middle of the day, access that way. And then we do have that, the trailhead parking, and then a connection to the monoliths trails up there. So you can walk the perimeter of the entire site, even with some nooks and crannies in here, in a safe, you know, way. So you're off of the vehicular road and...
And there's lighting, there's pedestrian lighting, pedestrian tail lighting.
There's, yeah.
Pedestrian routes, okay.
Yes, yes, next meeting, HGA will cover that. But yes, everything is, there's, there's safety pedestrian lighting, low level along the whole walkway.
Okay, great. And then the connection to the trails, the, I see the yellow indicating the trail on there. I think that actual trailhead is going through CST land. Is there any kind of discussion with the trustees about a permanent easement for the trail?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's been drafted, and it's going to provide for a 16-car parking lot and access on the loop road.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's great. I think I just had a couple more questions. One of them was related to soils. You did talk a lot about the different soil depths and the different typologies. In places where, like in that front meadow entry, where I think you have six inches of soil, but you're also indicating some trees, what's your plan there when you are planting trees in a more limited soil depth?
With pits, suppose you have, okay, tree pits, 36 inches in the tree pits.
Okay.
So we don't, generally in the soils diagram, we don't highlight that.
Yeah.
But the point there being that that is, I'm trying to go back to that drawing, that that's part of the detail for the individual tree pit.
Yeah.
So that those will be dug in that way. Yeah.
Great. My last question is just how the, how working with the restoration ecologists, wildlife biologists, how has that, you know, kind of informed your process in a way that's different? What do you think it's really bringing to this landscape plan?
I think it's really helpful to, I think, we always try to say the right plant in the right place. We probably don't get as, as much in-depth existing conditions analysis as what Josh was able to provide. So that was kind of interesting to see that, like, you know, things that we might do, maybe intuitively, it's bad, it's like fact-checking us the whole way. And to collaborate on another, a bigger plant nerd than me, to really see of, you know, how we can just amp up the biodiversity here in a really responsible, sustainable way. I think that's what's been really fascinating through, through all of this.
Yeah. Are you thinking about plant hardiness zones in that conversation too?
Yes, we, we, exactly. I think, I know they've recently changed things and made them, you know, a little bit warmer. I still say that we have very cold snaps. And so I'm not moving everything to like, I want a zone four, a zone four, a zone five plant material up there because, you know, we're still getting very cold moments in the winter. And the heat is one thing, irrigation helps us with that, you know, for, at least for establishment, but trying to hit that sweet spot.
Yeah. And things like sugar maples or maybe, we'll see how they do, basically.
Yeah, well, and this is where, I think we're, the other thing we're trying to do is balance straight species versus cultivars. Because there are total benefits to cultivars for just that reason. They're kind of, you know, genetically designed to do this thing. But at the same time, I'm coming back to realizing that straight species are not something that you should just do in a buffer zone area, that there is from the, from the overall diversity of genetic material, that straight species, finding the ones that are going to do well, because not be all wacky. Or you find a straight species that could be, you know, we know they're there for a reason, but like tuck them behind something else, let them do well. I think that was, that's been really interesting too.
And then will biohabitats work with you all on the operation maintenance plans, or how you actually manage these landscapes? Because you do have all these different typologies set up, and some of them are going to require different mowing regimens and different inputs.
Yeah.
Do you leave the leaves, and how often do you mow, and all that? It would be a shame to get, to do this amazing work that you're doing, and then have your sort of typical commercial landscape company come in and just destroy.
Do most volcanoes and like, yeah. No, I think, I think the whole team will be working together, and, you know, Matt's group has their environmental side too. I think it's gonna be, you know, we want to make it realistic for Peter. This is the big thing too. It has to be maintainable. That's part of sustainability and a really key part of it. So as we're working through this, there is going to be areas that get less regular maintenance by design.
Right.
And that's okay.
Right.
And then some areas that will get more maintenance, because it's the front of the building and, you know, the little pods of like beautiful planting in certain places. So we're trying, we're, we're working very hard, it's a hierarchy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, a question.
Thank you. I'm done.
Question.
Thank you.
And we appreciate Laura's expertise in this area. So any question, other questions or comments from the board? Any public comments specifically about landscape, stormwater, and I don't know limit to two minutes, Mrs. Gates?
Katerina Gates here, I am again. I didn't plan it. I was just coming from someplace else elsewhere, and I thought, oh, planning board, I wonder what's going on. So glad to be here, because I'm so pleased for what you're doing. I don't think anybody else in this town has done a plant like this one for anybody to build in large scale. I want, what is the percentage of the building comparing to the site? Like one-third of the site?
I can pull that up for you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
To that one-third place of the, the building actually to the site?
Well, how much of the building? How much of the site does the building cover?
Right, right.
Okay.
I mean, approximately, doesn't matter, because you can see, it uses a lot of space compared to what...
Good question, thank you. Anybody online have any comments or questions?
And, I have a print that happens basically. I know that you cited so well about what is appropriate. I, I'm very knowledgeable, very interested in plants and trees and everything all my life. And I think you're doing such a great job in planning everything. I think it's great for this town to hear you, because, and I wish more people came, because a lot will complain when something is not heard already, but if they came, they would have heard it. And so if anybody hears who like to complain in this town that something went wrong, maybe they shouldn't have been here.
Well, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gates?
The building coverage is 6.6%.
That's amazing, yeah.
All right, Mr. Gates?
Jim Gates, too, Desmond Avenue. I listened to this presentation, a couple of suggestions and thoughts to the parking, and I would want some safety water for the buildings that are set. The lessons learned that I've had with parking garages. Early on in Michigan, a parking garage fell apart one afternoon with a whole load of cars and heavily used salt on the roads. And I just want to observe a proper surfacing and type of concrete to resist the salt penetration. It literally ate up all of the car fluids from oil and gasoline that dripped too, to the point where it just fell apart. I know in Saudi Arabia, we had to import sand to make concrete, because their sand was not the right type. And I'm concerned that we still use salt in the wood chair, that this building is going to be built, hopefully, with the Massachusetts Building Commission, that anticipates this problem. If not, we should, for more mind for this problem coming up. Mr. Biden's mandate to try to get everybody to use electric vehicles. It's going to, with a whole new dictionary into the large building for parking, everybody's going to have to have a charging station, and everybody's going to have presumably lithium engine drives, and we're going to have a general problem if lithium starts exploding somewhere. I'm not sure what the word is. In a garage full of cars, a similar problem, they're going to have a enormous wildfire, which we don't have any way of putting up.
Okay, I'm gonna just stop you right there, Mr. Gates. I'm gonna, we're talking tonight about stormwater and landscape, so that's traffic question. And I think electric vehicles, electric vehicle safety is a matter for the building codes and the fire department. So thank you for raising it, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep our, it's late, and we're gonna keep ourselves to...
Stormwater.
So let's just, okay, I think you've had your, your comment. Let's move on, because we want to, we've got a lot still to talk about.
Did you say one more minute?
Nope, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna turn over right now to Weston and Sampson.
I would appreciate it.
Mrs. Gates and Mr. Gates?
I, I would appreciate it, because it's very important I say that.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna turn it over to our consultant at Weston and Sampson. We do appreciate public comments, but I'm trying to even them on topic, on topic, please.
That's what we're here. On the, on the topic I was mobilizing.
Do I need to share with you? Do you need to, do I need to give you sharing?
I have a few drawings that I was gonna just pull up just for reference, but I can get started just with...
Yeah, you should have access now. While he's pulling that up, I will certainly say to anyone who's listening, or also Mr. and Mrs. Gates, if you have comments that you think we haven't heard, you can also write to us. We'll be happy to, and we do read all emails.
All right.
Go ahead.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Darren Kirk, I'm a team leader at Weston and Sampson. My colleague, James Pearson, site civil engineer, has been on the call and will be presenting together today. So I'll just dive right into our topic areas. We will be discussing the topographic changes in clearing, we actually had no comments. We'll be reviewing site development standards, aesthetic standards, landscaping, as was previously discussed, utilities, and then lastly, stormwater and operations and maintenance plans. I had planned for the next hearing to discuss noise standards, so we haven't responded to the comments presented, so we will, in the next hearing, be discussing noise and presenting that information. So diving into our first comment, obviously, we've issued two memos at this point, both in April and June. And we've been tracking responses from the initial files and the supplemental information we received and made from the applicant. So tonight, I'll just be highlighting those open items and questions. So as was mentioned earlier, items 4.3 and 4.6 were addressed with respect to tree protection of existing trees and limiting clearing from utility trenches. Item 4.8, however, is related to construction activities of parking during construction, offices, trailers, stockpile equipment, material, and limiting that, those construction phase activities. So we suggest that the applicant sort of clarify on the plans where those items are listed for item 4.8, or add to the drawings as they had done with 4.3 and 4.6. Again, specifically construction crews, item 4.6 clearing. As was also mentioned, the hydro seating, the bylaw requires six inches of loam in all disturbed areas to be completed as lawn or grass. And the applicant will either need to meet that bylaw or request a waiver from the planning board. I just want to show, I guess, more specifically where that is, because it is a substantial rating change. Instead of 26 feet, it's a mounted area off of the parking that is going to be the trailhead. So this is going to be a substantial earthwork in school disturbance area. So the success and erosion controls that are in place by proper planting and vegetation is critical. So bylaw does call for six inches, so we, we can be a waiver, and this is the profile that applicants put in for this. They do have the six inches, they're meeting the standard around the building, but in this one area, as was discussed, you know, there might be future construction, it's sort of out of the immediate work area, but it is being disturbed substantially and graded substantially. So I just wanted to highlight that one item.
So is that the same area that you've mentioned? Although, okay, I didn't realize it had such a big grade, grade change.
Yes, okay, it's gonna be a large path, so stability is important.
What is the slope on that?
The finished slope is three to one-ish. What we're trying to do is mimic what's already out there. So as you, so it's, it's currently where the prior tenant was stockpiled materials. So as you, this is large, it's ugly right now, but what we're trying to do is, we looked at the harder bits here, and it's somewhere between two to one and three to one. So what we're trying to do is mimic that as we come down through here. So it comes up, it's very steep through here, you can see it's almost a cliff. But as we pull this back, and then comes up, and then we're gonna come back down, so that whole area kind of becomes a bit more natural.
And the side facing the road, is it much steeper with that?
I'm sorry, the...
The, the road.
Right along the road is even steeper.
Follows the road, that's a steeper road.
This is even steeper, this is, this is basically what we're trying to do, is get this down. It's 10% through here, and we're trying to get it down as quickly as possible, so we could have this more walkable. So that's kind of where that's actually, it's currently kind of steep anyway. That was the area that we were walking.
The road's steep, but then, but then the landform, is that more than three to one at that slope?
This, this landform is two to one.
That's two to one, correct.
And the six inches of, of soil is along the two to one lands? Where's, where, where are you asking for the waiver on?
We're asking for the waiver for this piece, where we would only want, we would want for, this is going to be planted with trees, and we're going to have to do gueving and some things there for establishment. But this is this kind of like area that's further out. So even with some of the steepness here, to try to get this, because we're not planting it heavily, we just want to seed it, it will have to have erosion control and things to go down and a quick, you know, germinating mix. But that's just sort of another reason why, cost-wise and stability-wise, to get four, you know, four inches of loam out there, soil, planting soil would be, that's why we're asking for the waiver, because that's what we're pushing.
And that's not irrigated, right?
Correct. We have to do it for establishment with hydro seating, we might, but it might just be, we haven't quite figured that one out yet, yeah.
And I guess my question for Weston Sampson is, is that, does that seem prudent as a waiver? I mean, what's your recommendation on that request?
Sure, for like a lawn and grass here, we would specify six inches. Again, this is not really serving that purpose, it's temporary erosion control. Three to one slope is a standard slope that we would also use for slope stability. So then the applicant, I guess, will pull up that detail too. They are sort of preparing the subgrade, as well, the 12 inches of material under the four inches will be decompacted at least, so there will be a little bit more root penetration. So it wouldn't be unreasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that covers the initial, actually, that's some landscaping area items, there was still section four. That's what we briefly included, the aesthetic standards too. Just the only comment that we had open was on May 28th, there was a presentation, a video of the, of the screening from the highway, which is helpful. We were just seeking additional documentation for that. The applicant has communicated that they've done extensive study of the screening. We wanted to just get some more information. The video was one point, we wanted to look at the topographic tie from, from the highway to review screening. And then moving more deeply into the landscaping. So just one of the items that was noted was that we had asked for additional shade trees in the May response to comment. The applicant had indicated that was going to be provided on landscaping plans. We only have the site civil and the traffic plan, so it might just be... We only have the site settled on the traffic plan, so it might just be a location issue, so.
I think you were looking for four or five trees along the, this side of the, of the face, of the Phase Two garage. So I think we sent you a drawing and said like, yeah, we can do.
Yeah, the comment, so we, we just need the plan from the applicant. So the comment indicated that was addressed and we can confirm that as we get the plan. And then similarly, on the maintenance, which was discussed extensively, the operations and maintenance plan of landscaping features is critical. That's going to be developed in construction, I understand. So that could be a condition of approval if the planning board receives the copy, that would be our recommendation.
Yeah, I just, I, just an aside on that, the, when the high school was built, the operation and maintenance plan was developed sort of at the end of construction and it was subject to planning board approval. And I think in that case it was con con approval as well. So, and it was filed with a, you know, some annual recording and so I think there's precedent for us to do that.
Right, and then moving into the utilities, which was also touched on. So there's been coordination between the applicant and Department of Public Works on water. And there was mention of a bit package that also went out, so we were just seeking that documentation to be able to review what those connections are beyond the programs at work. Similarly, there's been discussion of the fire alarm system. So we actually didn't receive a response to that comment for 8.5, which is the fire alarm system. We requested that information from the fire chief as well. We would also benefit from that documentation, the fire alarm system meets all the requirements. So I think with that, I will transfer it over to my colleague, James Pearson, for the site civil stormwater elements.
Yes, good evening. Darren Herd, James with Weston Sampson.
Sorry, does he need, uh, no, yeah, we're just gonna go through the comments. We'll just, if you want me to pull up the plans I can, James.
Okay, and you can hear me?
I can hear you well, yeah.
Okay, great. So this is our section 10 within our memo, stormwater management standards. So we were looking at this kind of from the standpoint of Article 23 of the town general bylaws and also the state stormwater management standards and just kind of general good engineering practice. So by and large, we had a number of comments that, that we had made in here that predominantly had to do with just various technical things that, that were kind of like coordination issues between the plans and the calculations that were submitted. And after having gone through these with a couple of different rounds of submissions, it, it appears that, you know, the engineer had for the most part addressed most of the items that we had concerns about. You know, I'm happy to touch on any one of these specifically if there are any questions anyone has about them. But I think what I'd like to do really is just focus on the ones that I think still kind of remain outstanding. And they are, they're quite honestly things that the board could potentially consider addressing by way of conditions of approval. So one of them being, let's see here, we have it. Darren, I don't know if we have a copy of our memo in front of us or anything, but it's, it's really under the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards. Under standard three, I had commented about they're beginning for some test pits within the rain garden area. So the applicant's plans had a number of test pits and bores throughout the site. And some of them were somewhere in the rough vicinity of the largest of these rain gardens that they're doing, but they're still about 60 feet away. Now, the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook tells you you're supposed to do test pits within the footprint of any, anything that's doing infiltration. So they have an infiltration basin in the rain garden, both which you're supposed to be able to infiltrate. I can kind of see why maybe they haven't done the test pits and the bores right now. And that is because the proposed rain garden and proposed infiltration basin are within the footprint of what are currently recreational facilities. So it's like tennis courts and things. And so obviously that would be a little disruptive to those areas. We've often seen other, other boards and other towns grants conditions where they'll kind of allow the project to get approved under the condition that the applicant go out and do these confirmatory test pits before they get really deeply into construction. So that they can sort of confirm the conditions at the exact locations of those stormwater BMPs. And, and, and so they can do so early in the process of, of, really prior to starting any major construction. So that if there's any redesign that's required, it can kind of get dealt with right away. Rather than, you know, halfway through the project and then we find out that the stormwater basin they designed, you know, has a technical problem. So I, I guess my suggestion to the board would be, you know, they haven't done test pits within those footprint of those basins. There's something that should be done. Is it something that we have to force them to do before you guys vote to approve the projects? In my opinion, I think you could probably vote to approve the project, but you could just add this as a condition that leaves test pits prior to, prior to construction. So then moving along. Just scrolling down, bear with me for a minute, I'm going down through the, through the, my notes here. So it's under item 10. Actually, no, this was, this was just kind of one of these miscellaneous things that we kind of noticed on here. We had originally noted that there were some discrepancies on the plans between some of the storm, stormwater structures and some of what the calc showed. There still were a few minor inconsistencies between the calc and the plans. And that's with regard to some of the renovations of certain structures, specifically catch basins 10, 14, drain mantle 12, and drain mantle 15. And, you know, if the applicant's taking notes, I'm happy to repeat those. But those will be in, in mental level issues as well. So just a few, a few little minor things there that could still be addressed. But again, those could easily, I, I can see those being conditions where, you know, the board could vote to approve the project and just tell them, you know, hey, this condition, they just kind of need to clean up these little minor inconsistencies in the plans. And then there was another one with regard to operations and maintenance plans. So under, under Article 23, Section 7, operation and maintenance plan of the general bylaw, there's a requirement that there's supposed to be a formal operation and maintenance agreement. I looked through the applicant's latest submission and I couldn't find where there was a formal O M agreement that had been included in there. Again, this could be addressed with a condition, you know, the board could condition the project to say that, you know, the applicant will be required to submit this agreement. You know, at whatever point the board feels is most logical for them to do so. So those were really kind of the main outstanding items. And again, all three of them, in my opinion, are things that the board could potentially address just by issuing, you know, conditions as part of their approval. Just in general, you know, looking through the stormwater management design for this project, it, it looks like the applicant is really using pretty typical kind of stormwater management features that, that most of us who do stormwater design work are accustomed to using on, on these types of projects. You know, again, it's, you know, there's kind of a pipe to the van system. It discharges to, to things like rain gardens, an infiltration basin. We have, one of the basins is actually a wet basin. The, the project was, was noted again due to its traffic volume is being, technically speaking, would fall kind of under the category of land use with a higher potential pollutant load. You know, and they provided some stormwater BMPs to address sort of the, you know, the greater pretreatment standard that would be associated with that. So that looked reasonable to us. A lot of the parking is happening in a parking garage and the parking garage stormwater runoff, from what I understand, is going to be run through an oil grid separator. So that's, so that kind of addresses that standard as well. So again, I'm not going to go through each and every one of these items by item. I was just gonna highlight the things that I think are still just kind of outstanding items. And again, happy to answer any questions if there is a specific concern that anyone has about anything in particular.
Thank you. Anything else, Darren?
Okay. I guess the only question I would have is Mark or, and, and. On the question of the tests, the, the test pits for the, because that does, those dictate your final design, right? So.
Yeah, generally, we would, should have those done and completed. I mean, you have equipment out there on the site and they have been tearing up the, the courts and everything else.
Yeah, so.
So to, to complete those at this point is pretty.
Yeah, he's, he's absolutely correct. We didn't do it because it's, it's a court area. Um, the factor is safety that we used on that is, is significant. I think we have a, our civil contractors out there, when he gets equipment on the site, more than happy to do a test pit. But we do have about 204 holes through the entire site at this point. So we, we're pretty confident in what's out there. So if you want to make it a condition of approval, I'm more than happy to.
Yeah, I guess the only issue is that if you have to redesign your whole, your storm system anyway, that's, it's your risk.
I am confident that we, there will be no redesign.
But, I mean, that, that is, I guess it's that your risk in that.
Well, we still have some time before a few minutes.
And it may catch up with us. Okay, sounds great. Great, I think that concludes things for tonight unless there's Chris or Sue, any comments? Okay, great, thank you, everyone. So we will take a motion to continue. And I think we've decided we're gonna meet on July 9th, that's a Tuesday. I think Mark and I may chat a little bit about, well, Mark and I may chat about how we're gonna kind of get this thing over the finish line. So there's, in my mind, a possibility we might meet briefly on the night, take up our other special permits that night and add a dedicated cell signaling night, but we'll.
Well, the thing is, you gotta continue it to a date and time certain.
Right, but we, but we could always continue at that, so nice tonight.
I would suggest that we continue it till the ninth at 7:30.
Night at 7:30. And then.
And, and then we'll discuss, after this, we'll then discuss like the site work and, and so.
Okay, so, well, I'll take a motion to continue the cell signaling, uh, public hearing to July 9th, Tuesday, July 9th at 7:30.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, all right, I think the last thing we have to do tonight, thank you. So if you guys can kind of tiptoe out so we can continue our, our little business here. You can even figure out sign on time for the Reed Park. And talking point, I think, so. There's always the red, white, and blue breakfast we can do it at.
We have special parking if you do that.
Yeah, special parking. Probably not the best day.
Well, I live right around the corner from that point, so I'm available, whatever.
What about Monday, what about Mon, next Monday night or? Yeah, that's the first, next Monday night, that.
July 1st.
1st, Sue and Chris?
July 2nd.
July 1st, is it finished? Okay, why don't we shoot for that, maybe at 6?
6, where are we gonna meet?
Uh, Reed Park.
Yeah, why don't we?
At Reed Park?
Reed Park.
Reed Park.
Okay, now, Gail, you got 6 o'clock, next Monday, July 1st. And then, provided that the applicant, that's by on.
Yeah, either by on or Foss, one or the other.
Foss. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think you.
No, okay. Um, great, and we have minutes of June 10th. I have a motion for the minute, to approve the minutes of June 10th.
So moved.
Okay, I got a second from Peter, a motion from Sue, any discussion?
Only that when I last checked the folder, they weren't in there yet.
What?
When I last checked the folder, sorry, they were not in there.
They weren't up there, okay, so maybe I'm staying.
Yeah, so I will abstain.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. Uh, and one abstention, five, yes, one abstention. Um, any other business? I actually have one other business, which is the bike and pedestrian committee is meeting tomorrow night. I'm gonna try to go if I think they're talking about, but if you're too many, I don't want you to, to let you know that if you, if, if any of us can go and just listen to their conversations, they're gonna, they've sent us a memo?
I have a draft that they'll probably discuss tomorrow, which is fairly similar to some of the comments that we brought up and discussed at this meeting about hat water app, about traffic comming, about the way thing, uh, school speed. There's some other requests in there that maybe would have did more than.
Shoot for the moon.
Yeah.
So I think that enough.
Then, then would be, but, but I will also be leading as well to discuss.
Is that there, Mark?
Uh, don't guess.
No, no.
But then it's in one of these two lines.
Okay, it's in one of these.
6:30?
Uh, yeah. So, um, just.
Wait, I think that's in it, it's, and is it a Wednesday?
Are you still on the committee?
Is it tomorrow or Wednesday?
You just started liaison.
Yeah.
Oh, is it Wednesday?
Yeah.
26th.
Yeah, yeah, it's Wednesday, because tomorrow's CBA.
It is at 6:00 in town hall on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
But let me know if you can't go.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, great, and any other business? Um, how are we doing? Uh, it's like, I guess everybody knows it's like board voted to send this off to, uh.
Oh, the MBTA.
MBTA, so you're working on the final application.
Yes, Emily says it should be completed, ready to submit by the end of the day once.
Okay, great, just make sure we all get it.
We had a conference call about some legal language that, so.
Great. Okay, great, I had a motion to adjourn from Chris and Pete Gordon was seconding that.
I was.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.